Recording in progress.
I'm going by computer time. Yeah, right. People, people online. Nine o'clock and we will start our Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. Start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Dan, I'm your real Commissioner. Oops.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Nancy, County Council.
Suzanne Hoffman, interim County Administrator.
And in the room. Go ahead. Yes.
Ryan, Executive Director for Oregon County's Webcalm.
Matt Walker, Communication Officer, Oregon State Department of Government.
Hi, April Holland, here at Health Park Director.
I'm Reddick, a health executive director.
I will hold the air to the person.
Good evening, this is April.
We're approaching, oh, information officer.
Eric, my little corner recorder.
And those joining us online?
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Darren Nichols, Community Development Director.
Good morning, everybody. This is Sarah Siddiqui, the Equity Diversity Inclusion Coordinator for Benton County.
Well, welcome and good morning. Next up is announcements.
We have Daniel Reddick also.
Morning, Daniel.
Good morning, Daniel Reddick, Solid West and Water Quality Program Coordinator. Thank you.
Hey, any announcements?
I just like to acknowledge that today's election day and we're all very much looking forward to eight oh five P M this evening.
Enter eight, eight ten. All right. Like no other announcements, review and approve our agenda. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll consider the agenda approved and start with the work session four point one. Monthly COVID update from Department Operations Center, April Holland. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Commissioners. Suzanne, fans. Nice to see you all today. So so today's update, today's monthly update will have a lot fewer numbers than you've heard from me previously. This update is going to focus on the flurry of activity that's come with the end of the National Public Health Emergency for COVID nineteen, which happened last Thursday, May eleventh. Also of note, on May fifth, the World Health Organization ended its declaration of COVID nineteen as a P H E I C or FAIC. We refer to it affectionately. It's called a, it's a public health emergency of international concern. And this was declared January thirtieth, twenty twenty. So it's a long stretch. The decision to lift these emergencies doesn't coincide with the end of the COVID nineteen pandemic, but it does move us out of the emergency phase. These decisions were likely made in part due to the high levels of immunity to COVID nineteen worldwide through infection and or vaccination. Here in Oregon and at the federal level, there are many substantial changes to relay. I'll cover vaccination rules and coverage, COVID nineteen reporting and publication, and changes to isolation recommendations that are coming.
April, could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Can't. It feels really loud to me here, but it's not. It is good. Okay, okay. Just want to make sure I'm not blasting everyone, everyone's ear drums. Okay, great. So starting with vaccination rules and coverage first. I must say that these changes do not reflect a departure from what we know about COVID nineteen vaccination. Being up to date with the recommended COVID nineteen vaccines offers great protection against severe disease and death, and is especially important for those who are at greater risk for complications from COVID nineteen. So O H A issued temporary rules on May tenth to rescind enforcement of the COVID vaccination requirements for healthcare workers, effective May eleventh, and for K through twelve, starting at the end of the school year, June seventeenth, for most districts. Anyway, that's the date. And these temporary rules will be followed with permanent rules to repeal the original rules. That's really clear, right? So they're in the process of of removing them. Public health continues to declare COVID nineteen an outbreak, which requires commercial insurers to cover COVID nineteen vaccinations without cost share, regardless of where they are given. So if you have insurance for testing, you should contact, or sorry, for vaccination, you should contact your provider or insurer to ask where to obtain that vaccination. And a similar requirement will remain for the Oregon Health Plan. Beyond that, vaccines for children and and other other funding is available for COVID nineteen providers, vaccine providers, to ensure that those without insurance can continue to receive COVID nineteen vaccination as well. Moving on to reporting and and COVID nineteen reporting and publication of data. So all states have laws requiring certain conditions be reported. For example, Salmonella, lead poisoning, and measles are all conditions that must be reported by providers or laboratories across the state. However, a single case of influenza or a single case of norovirus is not required to be reported, though clusters and outbreaks are. So we're going to see a similar move for COVID nineteen reporting into that latter care category, where individual cases are no longer reportable. However, outbreaks will still be reportable, and O H A is moving toward a Sentinel Surveillance Surveillance Program, similar to those we have for influenza and respiratory and social virus or R S V. So what that's going to look like is at this time, there are eighteen Sentinel Labs, which are recording information on 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 testing, and they're going to send aggregate data to the state. So we'll be able to see when when a season starts, what the percent positivity rate is for the state, and when we see a decline in activity. COVID nineteen case counts will no longer be published. Dashboards have morphed into a respiratory virus data dashboard. So no more individual cases and no more county level data will be published. Ongoing data visualizations will include some statewide metrics, including percent positivity through the mechanism I just described, the ongoing wastewater trends and levels, variant monitoring, hospitalization rates, hospitalization capacity, death counts from COVID nineteen, emergency room trends, and vaccination trends. So we will continue to have an overarching surveillance of where COVID is in in our state, just moving away from that individual case reporting that that we've seen for the last three years. So vaccinations will continue to be available at the county level, unlike the the case counts. We'll still have the ability to look at age ranges and race ethnicity, in addition to some zip code level data, which has always existed. And all of these changes align with what we're seeing in terms of changes from C D C. Next, I'm going to move into where isolation recommendations are moving with COVID nineteen. We do expect that the newest isolation recommendations should be released soon, but I want to share with you what's what's expected. The the primary change is an elimination of a recommendation for five days of isolation for COVID nineteen infection. Most people infected with COVID nineteen will not need to isolate for a set number of days. However, they should be aware of their potential to infect others around them. In all cases, regardless of their vaccination status or prior infection with COVID nineteen, will be recommended to stay home until twenty-four hours after their fever is gone, without use of antipyretics or fever-reducing medication, and their other COVID nineteen symptoms are improving. They should also avoid contact with high-risk individuals, for example, residents of congregate care facilities and persons with immunocompromising conditions for ten days after that either first positive test or the the first day they developed symptoms. And they should mask when they are around other people in the first ten days after they become sick or test positive. This change is for the general public, but will also impact school restrictions and congregate settings. So there are also some federal changes that that come with the the end of the public health emergency. Without getting into too much detail regarding testing, you know, those with Medicare Part B will continue to be covered. The tests will continue to be covered if they're covered, if they're ordered by a provider. Medicaid is going to continue to cover without cost sharing through September twenty twenty-four. And then for vaccination and and therapeutics, we are we are still working through the existing pool of therapeutics out there and and vaccines. And then I covered some of the some of the pieces that Oregon has put in place. I really appreciate the that Oregon Health Authority has continued to declare COVID nineteen as an outbreak in order to continue these this this coverage for individuals. So the eleven thirty-five waivers, those are the waivers that allowed providers to establish alternate care sites, ease practice across state lines, those those rules, and expand Medicare telehealth coverage, suspended federal oversight and other reporting requirements. Those did expire on May eleventh and no longer apply. And then you know, a question that that still comes up and and hasn't yet been answered is what is what's to come for vaccination recommendations? We know that recently F D A and C D C added a recommendation that those sixty-five and above or with immunocompromising conditions have an additional COVID nineteen bivalent booster. The F D A Vaccines Advisory Committee will be meeting on June fifteenth to discuss the recommendation on the selection of of COVID nineteen vaccines for the the next season, the twenty-three, twenty-four season for the general public. That's a lot, and thanks for for hearing all of that. I'm happy to answer any of your questions to the best of my ability.
Any questions for April?
Yes, no direct questions about public health, but I know that the change in the rules is definitely going to have an effect on the economics of a lot of the clinics and hospitals and et cetera as we come out of pandemic. So I I'm personally a little concerned about that and access to care. But what are you, can you comment on that at all? You're not a direct provider, so.
Right, yeah. Well, I think as as we move into into these spaces for for vaccination and testing more solidly, you know, at least in our community, it's something that we've planned and prepared for for since we first got vaccination here in in December of twenty twenty. So and we have a very engaged community. I don't think that really answers the concerns around capacity and and added added need when when everyone's topped up already. I I am in contact, frequent contact with Samaritan Health Services, as well as Corvallis Clinic and other providers and and would like to get their take on that. So I'll do that. Thanks. Thanks.
I guess my question, you mentioned boosters and probably more information to come. Is there any downside to getting boosters? I I've heard, well, if it's been two months and if you're at high risk or four months and in the high-risk category, you should think about a booster. But I guess my my question would be, is there can you get to boosted?
There'd be too too much boosting. That's a, that's a good question. I think it's important to to review the the peer-reviewed literature and to have a discussion with the provider. However, I haven't seen anything to this point that where the risk benefit analysis leans to the side of not getting another booster. The increased protection, you know, there's still questions out there on it on how long those those are going to last, but having increased protection on on a whole. I haven't seen anything yet that says, don't, the booster isn't for you, but I'm sure on a provider to individual level, there may be some cases where where that's the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Well, a great report and I think I guess keep us posted on the frequency, but once a month seems reasonable. There there's a fair amount of research going on in the background and and I'm sure you're paying attention to, and it's nice to get that information out to a wider audience. So appreciate your efforts and helping us get through this in pretty good shape. And looking forward to summertime and schools out and kind of getting into a our healthy season and have some time to answer some of these questions and I'm sure we should have more information what we should be doing this fall.
We'll bring it to you. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you. Next up, we're introducing our new Natural Areas, Parks and Events Director, Tommy Douglas. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. It's wonderful to be here.
Been a while since I've seen you, but.
Hours. I wrote some notes in the last time we talked, though, so we can pick up right where we left off.
Great.
Nice to see you all. Want me to tell a little bit about myself?
Please.
Happy to do it. Hi, everyone. Tommy Douglas. I grew up in here in Oregon. I'm one of the few native Oregonians, I think, left in the world. But I I grew up in Malala. There you go, Commissioner. I grew up in Malala. I my very first rodeo was the Malala Buckaroo. And I grew up with all the the bounty of Willamette Valley around me and grew up in a farming community and farming and timber family. Professionally, I have been super blessed to have a career that has spanned from arts and culture to government, working in facilities, govern, you know, sustainability, all kinds of wonderful interconnections, but really, I think my role is to tell the story. Tell the story of what people are doing in our community, telling the story about all the amazing riches that we have. And you know that there's nothing more extraordinary than the natural beauty of Oregon and this area. And I just, you know, our our parks and open spaces, I think, are are one of our greatest gifts. So I feel super blessed to do the work that I do. Most recently, I was operating a consulting practice out of my home in Orbit, where I'm moving, I'm moving next month, so I'll be in the area soon. But before that, I was at the City of Eugene, where I served as the Cultural Services Director and oversaw the arts portfolio and public art, as well as communications for the broader division, which was libraries, parks, recreation, and and cultural services as well. Before that, I was at the City of, City of Portland, working in similar projects and programs and overseeing the mayor's portfolio, which was everything from parks and recreation to police to arts and culture, of course. And, you know, just, I think we even went through fluoride together as a as a team, which was a heck of a time if you were in public service. Correct. Yeah, the fluoride wars, whatever year that was. But, you know, all throughout it all, I think that I've found the greatest success in really strong partnerships by finding people whose values and missions are aligned with us. And we all sort of, you know, from the stone soup story, right? We bring our things and put them in the pot together. We make something really great. So in my, in my first three weeks in this role, I've now met in Fair Board, Parks Board, I've met some folks. I'm I'm kind of working my way through the county and the systems and learning what I can. And I'm like about every ten minutes, I'm blown away by the depth and breadth of what we do. And it's just an extraordinary place to work, and I'm I'm really thrilled to be here. I think when you think about what am I, we're going to see from Tommy in the next couple of years? I think you're going to see, as I foreshadow, a big emphasis on communications, on telling our story, on getting out to the people, understanding what amazing resources we have in this community. I mean, I I I teared up at Basil last week when I went out there for a drive. I'd never experienced that side in that spot before. And I wonder how many other folks in Benton County have never had the chance to explore that, hear about the amazing love story that built that place. I mean, there is just richness and beauty throughout this county, and I am so fortunate to be a custodian of it. So thank you for having me here. Like I said, we're going to talk a lot about storytelling in the future. We are also going to be working on how do we make the fairgrounds, events in Benton County as sustainable as possible, in both in terms of increasing revenue from a perspective, making sure we can take care of these places and spaces for a really long time. So I'm going to be shaking out the couch cushions for some money. I'm going to be trying to find new ways to fundraise and new partnerships so that we can grow and expand. Because I'm sure you all know there's a massive investment that we and that the citizens that we all make in natural areas and parks and events. And I just want to make sure that we leverage it and we have it for everyone for as long as possible. And so as much as I can let you all know, like, I'm I'm here to serve and I'm here to hear. I want to hear from you all and from the community about what are those areas we're missing? What areas of impact do you think we should have? And how do you want to help? I want to hear all of those stories. And so please do reach out to me in whatever way is possible. What we bring to the community and what we bring to the county is for everyone. You're going to hear this from me a lot, but y'all means all, right? And that means we make all of it available to everyone. We make sure they know and we communicate and we take really, really good care of it. So thrilled to be here. I want to thank Jesse for holding down the fort while before I started. He's an incredible leader, and I'm just thrilled to have him as my deputy. And yes, the small and mighty NAIVE team. I have to say, like, when I saw the budget and then I saw what they do with it, I I I still don't quite understand how it all manifests. There's a little bit of magic in NAIVE, and I'm excited to learn more about it. So thanks all. Any questions for me or areas of inquiry?
I guess, are you hoping to schedule with one of ones of us?
Yeah, yes, yes. I was sort of hoping to get my feet under me a little bit budget-wise so that I can ask really smart questions and and kind of, you know. Yeah, but I absolutely want to do that in the next, in the first six weeks. That's kind of my plan. So I'll be reaching out to schedule. And we can do that however you want. Like, if you want to show me something or I go out to the fairgrounds, like, I'm trying to, with staff, also encourage them to, like, let's go and look and see and do and share with, tell me the things you love the most about this place or this cool little footpath, or, you know, there's those, those are, you know, those are the memories, and those are also what connect people to the work. So I want to understand. I want to be there. But yes, I'll reach out to all of you. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the emphasis on communications. We have our county P I O in the back of the room there. And I think that's we can always use help getting getting the word out what what we've done and what we would like to do. And I'm thrilled to hear part of the team. So welcome. I was also glad to hear that this is not your first rodeo.
Got a T-shirt and all. Yeah, no, I I really love, I, yeah, I I think there's just so much about, like, Western heritage, culture, and all of these things that come to, you know, come to life at the fair and at the rodeo that are, you know, the unique things that make Oregon extraordinary and make Benton County extraordinary.
And I've used your story quite a few times so far about when you were in Eugene and asked with promoting a local business. You know, with.
The coffee races.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, I don't quite know the details how you got tasked with promoting I guess downtown Eugene business, it's all biodegradable caskets.
Sustainability is everywhere if you look for it.
Why don't you finish the story?
Well, it was actually, it wasn't even that, you know, I was really just trying to activate downtown. Downtown Eugene has had challenges over time, as as many of you know, of having a downtown that's active and engaged. And a lot of businesses closed, a lot of things happened, a lot of Main Street stuff. And so it was really about how can we connect with the tech workers that are moving back downtown and that, you know, and sort of really programming the area. um really programming the area to make a lot of those folks and businesses that were moving back feel like downtown was a place to be. So we programmed a lot of events and activities and that was one where I walked by the business one day and I was like biodegradable coffins. And then I was just like, there, and then it became a joke of like, I am gonna find a really cool event that's gonna involve the biodegradable casket guy and it's gonna bring out everyone and it's gonna be wildly appealing to all. And and we did like, but it's, you know, it's a lot of those old, old and new things. You know, like last night at the at the fair um board meeting, talking about those old eating contests, right? Like some of that old stuff's fun. Like the reason people like it's it's fun. It's lighthearted, it's silly. And you know, we all have more in common than we have different. And sometimes when you gather around, watch art or go to the rodeo or watch some guy shove a bunch of pie in his face, you know, we all just sort of forget about what changes us and what we're different and we all just experience the guy in the pie. And like, sometimes that stuff just doesn't stop being kind of fun. So yeah, sometimes you race coffins down downtown because it's fun. Simply because it's fun and because you wanna live in a community that does weird stuff like that. So you might see more coffin races and pie eating contests for me also, but um but but no, like there is some intent behind it and it is about connecting people um and not just eating pie all the big fair.
Well, uh, thank you and welcome to Benton County.
Um, quick thank you to Suzanne, who's been wonderful at, you know, I was hired by Joe remotely and I met him on his last day, which is kind of an interesting way to meet who was your boss, will not be your boss. And Suzanne has amazingly stepped in and has been super supportive and connecting me with folks. So thank you again. I I would appreciate that. It's been really, I've felt very well taken care of.
All right, oh. Uh, county administrator update, uh, or recruitment update, Tracy Marten Hall.
Good morning, commissioners. Boy, that's a contact Apollo. Uh, just a real quick update for you this morning. Uh, I chatted with Heather earlier and we received fourteen applications. Uh, when I asked her about the Apollo pool, she says that she's pretty satisfied so far. So that's about all the information I have there. Um, I do have something else for you to consider though. In light of the many conversations that have been going around about uh uh housing availability and housing inflation. Uh, we have a personnel policy uh for a residence requirement. And it requires that department heads live uh within the counties preferable, but within forty-five minutes of commuting distance, which could put them into Lane County, Plin County, excuse me, or even maybe some of the other neighboring counties. And so I just wanted to check in with you and either um get uh a response to that from you now or uh ask you to think about it and we can uh come back to you later. But if you wanted to put any kind of a residency requirement on the next county administrator, or if you were okay with just continuing uh under the policy.
So within forty-five minutes, we have a lot of county um department directors that no longer live in county at this point.
I don't have an exact number for you, but yes, we have several.
Yes. Um, and especially the newer ones, because the market has gone up so much. Um, I think it's difficult to just make a blanket statement. I think that my feeling is that we have a strong preference for someone to live within the county. But I think it um would limit our pool if we were to exclude the ability to hire someone that can't afford to live here.
So to clarify, a forty-five minute commute from where they live to the office or forty-five minutes from?
From where they live to the office.
How long is your commute, Bishop Malone, who does live in the county?
Uh, twenty-five minutes here or thirty minutes to downtown.
I'm just trying to think if there's anywhere in Benton County that would even take you that long, so.
Um, maybe L C.
Yeah, so I definitely, I mean, you can live that far away and still be in the county. I don't think we should exclude people who live that far away, but maybe you're just crossing the road.
Uh, my thought is that's one factor. You have what's ideal and then you deal with reality and I I can see that being one of the factors, but I wouldn't have that be the the deciding factor.
I mean, like, I just want someone who's gonna show up and do a great job, you know? I'd love for them to love the community as much as I do and love living in Benton County, but um, you know, ultimately they can show up and do the job. That's what's important.
Thank you. It sounds like uh you have consensus then for us to just proceed under the policy that uh, okay. All right. Thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any other questions if I can.
Um, we're still on the the schedule as uh presented. As the calendar.
So far, we'll keep an eye on the pool. Heather and I will make a warm contact by the end of the week so that we have a better assessment of the quality of the pool. And then um, check it out next Monday, see what we've got. We have a um first review scheduled with a a couple of leaders from within the county to do a sort of paper screen of the applications received. And um, we'll just size it up at that point in time and come back to you with a recommendation.
So so we're still, I guess you'd call it a soft close next Monday. Re- review what we have, but still accepting uh applications.
Absolutely. It'll just be our first review day.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, uh, four point four. Total maximum daily load annual report. Daniel Reddick and Laurel Ware. It's great having everybody in person this morning.
He's coming over here to visit too. Morning commissioners, I'm gonna lay this up because this is mostly Daniel's, I won't call it pet project, but it's he does a lot of the work behind it and I'm here as a support role in answering the questions you might have.
Yeah, thanks Laurel and good morning commissioners. Thank you so much for your time today. Uh, so we wanted to give you an update on one element of our water quality work that we do in the county. And that's the total maximum daily load or TMDL um work that we we do. Uh, the update today revolves around the recent annual report that we submitted for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Um, the biggest update is that that was accepted by DEQ in April of twenty twenty-three. And briefly, that report that we're required to submit annually is really to summarize the status of the work that we've done over the course of the year. Uh, DEQ approves an uh implementation plan that lasts for five years. So each year we go through that implementation plan and provide them status updates on on how each reporting element is going. Um, you can find that plan in the packet on page eighteen. It is in the form of a tracking matrix that we provide status updates on. And so as Laurel said, uh, we work collaboratively on this and uh it actually involves not just community development and public works, but all uh sorts of departments and divisions from across the county. Uh, we have uh community development, public works, engineering and roads, parks and natural areas, records, environmental health and sustainability staff all teaming up and we coordinate with all those folks to get status updates and also just work in water quality and TMDL elements into their programs. So it really takes a lot of folks to uh keep this uh implementation plan running. Um, and it was really exciting. Um, and each year is really exciting to get together with everyone and and chat about the work that they're doing and and provide DEQ with those updates. Uh, the main uh goal of the work that we're doing revolves around uh limiting the impacts of uh key pollutants um in our waterways through which are bacteria, temperature and mercury. And the mercury element was actually just revised um and updated by DEQ. So we submitted a new implementation plan to meet the new mercury requirements, which were also submitted on March twenty-fourth of this year. And we have a new update uh coming out for a new uh revised implementation plan in June. So we're currently working together uh to go through the implementation plan and make any updates we need to uh better uh protect uh water quality in the county. Um, so I think that is about it. I wanted to open up for questions, but I also wanted to briefly mention is one element of the water quality work that we do, but it's also closely related to the riparian uh work that we do as well as the N P D S work that uh Public Works um takes the lead on as well. And Laurel, if you have anything to add.
All those programs are all tied together. We do a lot of work really in the background to make sure that really we get community outreach and do do the things that we told D Q that we're gonna do. So, gotcha.
No, my only question was about the riparian uh work. Was that reported on as part of this TMDL update?
Yeah, the riparian is covered briefly in in some of the elements of the status matrix. Um, so it is covered similarly with the N P D S work. There's also elements of the status matrix that we report on.
And what are we seeing in terms of temperature trends?
So it's a little bit tough. Uh, we actually are at a pretty um serious lack of data to actually track temperature currently. Um, so we're working off of data that is either old or just really limited. So it's hard to tell trends. Most of the DEQ data that's released back to us to uh perform an analysis will say something like, you know, no trend available um due to the lack of data that we have. So that's another uh piece of it that we're hoping to work on. Especially over the next bionim is is figuring out how we can get more data to better inform the work that we're doing. Um, but we know that uh temperature is impacted by uh riparian cover, uh which is a really key factor. So the riparian work is certainly gonna come into play in making sure that the creeks and waterways are are covered and shaded.
Yeah, I know that Mary's River Watershed Council does have a network of temperature monitoring locations, but I know that it's also sparse enough that it's very difficult to make generalizations. Um, but one of the things that we talked about over the years was putting together more of a citizen science program uh to monitor water temperature. That might be something, if there's staff time, of course, because it takes time. Uh, that could be done in partnership with the council and the soil and water conservation district.
I know that uh it's the Mary's River Watershed, right? That's looking at getting a grant from O W to install additional uh temperature meters. Yeah, so we're hopeful. I don't know. We put together a lot of uh rec- recommendation letter support last week for that grant, so.
And we're also meeting with other watershed groups uh with Mary's River Watershed Council included, basically to collaborate and and talk about data um and talk about the needs and equipment needs and what what opportunities there are for partnering and sort of collecting this. Um, some of the challenges are there is data out there, but it's not meeting the standards of D Q to include. Um, so that's one element that I know the watershed groups are currently working on as well. So I think getting everyone in the same room and chatting about, you know, how can we all get on the same page? Make sure sort of our data goals are aligning towards being able to, you know, improve water quality throughout the county.
Yeah, it sounds good. I know that the Lucky Meat Watershed Council and Mary's work together pretty closely, so and they cover part of county as well.
Yes.
Uh, all right, uh, you you mentioned that uh your report was accepted uh as in in April. Uh, does that finish the process for this year?
Yeah, it does. For that twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two reporting year, uh, the the acceptance finishes that out. We added it to the webpage. So uh the public has a chance to review that report and see the acceptance letter from DEQ. Um, so we start right back over again with the uh the new updates. And like I said, we have a um a revised implementation plan to in June uh to D Q. So that'll give us an excellent opportunity to go through, figure out what's working, what's not. And you know, how can we improve that plan for the next, you know, set of five-year uh annual reviews?
So, uh, did you give you any um guidance on um improving the you you the report for the following year?
This year we didn't receive specific guidance on, you know, hey, you you should tweak this or this would be better if it were framed this way. Uh, the main guidance they provided this year was on the mercury requirements. They said, here are the mercury elements that you need to include in that next uh uh plan. Um, so that's something that we had already submitted separately. Um, but other than that, we haven't received any specific guidance for improvement. But anytime we do make updates, we want to involve D Q. We have a a contacts that we work with on these reporting elements that we wanna make sure it's meeting all of their requirements before we start, you know, diving into it too far with other departments. Like I said, it's such a collaborative effort. We wanna make sure that it's gonna work with all of the other departments and divisions that will actually have to implement this work in their um daily tasks.
And I don't remember to, does this TMDL report, it's just county, correct? It doesn't cover other small cities?
Yes, just, it's just the county and it's actually just for the subsection of the county that's covered by the Willamette Watershed. So um, we have small sections of the county that aren't actually covered by this TMDL. Um, but we participated in other TMDL projects that would cover other areas.
L C, for instance.
Exactly, yeah.
And so when you're putting together the new five-year plan, uh, are you working with community groups uh to get their input uh with respect to partnerships or is that primarily an internal activity?
So far it's primarily internal. Uh, we're meeting um internally uh currently to basically review uh what elements of that um are going to need to be revised. Um, but it is primarily an internal uh task. There aren't a ton of elements that really have like a external space to them for this uh this work, but any any time that is the case, we definitely wanna make sure it's working. So I think getting feedback from, you know, the staff that are actually gonna be implementing these plans, for instance. Um, you know, records sends out notices to uh dog registration um via mail to basically inform them about the water quality impacts that um dog waste can have. Um, so we wanna make sure that's gonna work for that program. That includes the the folks that are actually getting those licenses.
Okay, uh, you mentioned uh keeping track of uh mercury. Is that a issue in this uh area? As in, do we?
Yeah.
Do we have um some?
Yeah, so mercury is an interesting topic. We're we're basically learning that mercury is kind of an issue everywhere. Um, and it's actually a primarily like a sediment issue where uh we wanna prevent erosion. Um, and basically prevent soil and uh, um, you know, debris from running into waterways and carrying mercury that's essentially falling from the atmosphere and landing in our soil. So um, the the biggest piece of the mercury control is really uh erosion and sediment control.
Great. Oh, thank you.
So the mercury is primarily atmospheric and not part of the geological nature of the valley?
I, yeah, I've heard also that it's agricultural too. It's like in agricultural areas is there's a lot of um mercury through there, but I I I'd have to defer to Daniel if he's done any other research on.
Yeah, I mean, nothing specific other than what D Q essentially, that the updates from D Q for this last um this last rendition of the plan centered around preventing uh mercury from running off through sediment. And that was just like a key area that they wanted us to focus on. Uh, but we also call out mercury even from like an e-waste perspective. There's mercury in materials that we use. So handling hazardous material that includes mercury content was another program element. So there's a lot of different uh source of the mercury that we wanna pay attention to, but the, yeah, the latest plan update revolved around the uh sediment uh piece of uh runoff making it into the waterways.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do you have anything else for us?
No, that's it. Thank you so much for listening.
Well, thank you for the effort and uh, sounds like a successful report. Which is nice, makes it easier next time. Maybe they're not looking with quite as much scrutiny because uh uh you folks know what you're doing. Oh, thank you.
Keep, keep moving forward. That's what we do. Yeah, thank you.
Um, next up. Oregon Cascades West Council of Government, also known as the COG. Um, six-month uh update, Ryan Boat.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. It's always a pleasure to be.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. It's always a pleasure to be here and talk a little bit about the great things going on at the Council of Governments. Provided you a relatively comprehensive packet today and am thrilled to give you information about our. Second attempt at an annual report. This year is definitely, I would say, new and improved. Has a great look and feel to it. Much of that, it makes hands here. Oh, Commissioner Malone, what a gift it was for us to finally get a communications person, wasn't it?
Benton County would agree with that.
Yeah, a couple of times through that. So. Anyway, lots jam-packed with great information because we do have such a unique footprint in terms of everything that we do. I don't plan to belabor the report. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have thoughts on that. I'm also would be happy to hear. If you have additional improvement ideas as we move into the third year of that that we can start to plan for now. I also provided a memo to give you some updated information since we are already a quarter into this year. And much like the annual report, I don't plan to go over those details, but I have a handful of things that I'd like to update you on that are new. Just within the last couple of weeks. So on the first page, about three-quarters of the way down, we have a conversation there about the mobility hubs. Now, these are multiple multimodal transit. Centers that we plan to put at OSU and OBCC where the buses will go and we'll have bike share and things of that nature. We found out last week that we have been awarded two point four billion dollars of construction money to complete those centers. And as as if that wasn't enough. The kind of the cherry on the top of that was a comment that we were recognized as the best grant application in the state. So I think that's kind of a testament to really Nick Meltzer and his team and kind of all of the work that has gone into these. Mobility hubs. Working through that. As an additional testament to Nick and his team, I know you've heard over the last couple of years, this longstanding. Work with the seamless seamless transit experience where we work with the eight transit districts really across Lynnburn and Lincoln counties. To create a seamless experience for riders who could get from Lincoln City to Sweet Home and back and not have to worry about the fact that they were crossing. Multiple transit agencies to do it. They could order that on their app. They get real-time GPS information. It seems like a no-brainer, but it's actually more sophisticated than San Francisco's public transit system. And who is highly regarded as one of the greatest public transit areas in the nation. Mostly because of their BART system and we don't have that kind of system right now. But we just found out yesterday and it maybe is supposed to be semi-under wraps, but the National Association of Regional Councils that we belong to. Is recognizing that and providing a national award for that for rural communities and connective tissue. So. I'll be going out to that conference in Detroit here in a couple of weeks. So we just found that out yesterday, two days ago. So super exciting about that. I wanted to also note on page two, there was a note that the Cascades West Business Lending. Had applied for a grant with Business Oregon to do a loan loss reserve program. We did have a conversation with Business Oregon yesterday. We have been approved. Right now, the number is not the full million dollars. That was kind of the top end of what people could apply for. And until the contract signed, I'm not at liberty to talk about what the actual number is, but. What this is going to do for us is our small business lending department really bridges the gap for. Small businesses that can't get traditional financing to completely close the deal and be able to get them to start up their business. Or do business expansion. And traditionally, we've been a pretty conservative group around how it is that we administer those funds. The great news is that we really dot I's and cross T's and over the last ten years, we've not had. Somebody defaults on one of their loans that we've issued out. But what this really does is allow us to be a little bit more intentional about. Trying to open our arms a little bit and be a bit more welcoming around trying to help people get across the finish line. To start a new business or to expand their business. We have transitioned all of our. Marketing materials to Spanish as well to try and get some penetration into a new population that's moving out. We are the. Really, and so this money will provide an additional backstop because when we provide a loan to somebody, we. We need to secure the backend of that loan just in case, for whatever reason, it 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 goes belly up. And and then. The great thing about this one as well is after ten years. If none of that money or whatever of that money remains that was not used to secure a loan that defaulted. That money comes to the agency as a supplement to the lending program in Toto. And it will come without strings. And so that will give us the ability to maybe move into new lending products as well that aren't as tied to some of the. Federal restrictions. So be on the lookout for that actual number. It is a really good number. So, but I can't release it yet. And then on the last page, there's. Obviously, I love talking about the work that we do in connection with Benton County and the Veteran Services Program. This has been a really a great partnership and we've loved doing the work. Our two VSOs, Mark and Ian. Are absolute rock stars and feels like we have some great stability in that group right now, which is wonderful. So a couple of things that I would highlight here is that we are now regularly in Monroe. We have scheduled time and we are also doing unscheduled time in Monroe. We are in the process of putting up a billboard here locally for suicide prevention. And I know Meg has been working on that, so that's just about to get across the finish line. And we are also about to do a behavioral depression intervention pilot. As we know, a lot of our, I I think there's a lot of attention to the notion that a lot of veterans. Struggle with depression issues. And we want to do our part to help enhance support system for veterans in our community to make sure that they have the supports that they need. We don't want any more of those statistics to be part of the Benton County.
And who are you working with to provide that behavioral health intervention on that pilot?
I don't have that. Do you know about that? I can get that in for.
Yeah, I'd love to know more.
Okay. And then I also wanted to talk about two more things quickly. One is. That we have reached the first quarter of our first ever multi-year strategic plan. And we are still kind of. Playing around with the look and feel of reporting work around that. I'm happy to report that our first set of milestones, we were pretty tempered with that and we were. Able to navigate our way across the finish line for most of those. There's a couple of them that we weren't and we'll be presenting that information to our board of directors. Here later on this week. And I think that's good. That's it's very healthy. We're, we plan to continue to administer this information in a very transparent way. It'll be up on our website for everybody to see because we have made commitments to hold ourselves accountable. To the things that we said we're going to try and accomplish in these next three years. I would say the couple of areas that seem to be a little bit off-kilter right now. Are partly because it's new for us and we were pretty optimistic about what we thought we could get done. It's great to have a strategic plan in front of you. And then the first thing you want to do is get it all done today. So trying to have some really tempered restraint around what's realistic without. You know, hiring forty more people to get it across the line. And and then there were just some things that we didn't know that, for instance, one of the things was, we talked about having an annual. Or a six-month. All-staff meeting for all of our staff and shortly after setting that milestone, we decided to go to an annual. And so that milestone didn't get met because we decided not to have that meeting. So. But there's a couple of things out there. I would encourage you all to take a look at it or for Commissioner Malone to bring that back if you have interested in. And getting a little bit more insight into our day-to-day thinking about how it is that we're trying to meet the needs of the community and those things that we're focused on. For the next couple of years. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about is our ongoing partnership with Community Services Consortium. Now, I know that all of you as commissioners are deeply. Engaged in the conversation with Community Services Consortium. And so forgive me if this is redundant information, but I know when I moved into this role, there was some real drive. For us to really push our partnership together. And so I'm really proud to sit before you today and say that. A lot of tangible things are really in flight between the two organizations right now. Peggy McGuire, who I know you all know very well, and she probably presents here as well as seeing you on the regular as as part of her board. Is just an absolute joy to work with and the two of us are of similar minds that's around how to move the two organizations in partnership. As you may be aware, we just kicked off our contract with MGT to do our diversity equity inclusion. Deep dive work for the next couple of years. That will include an information session from both of our sets of board members. To talk about. Of your understanding of the organizational culture and where we're going, staff interviews, surveys are going out this way to all staff. And a couple of other key people, and this will be our first organizational assessment about where we are internally. And where we need to go. The training plan, we'll have a, we'll have a joint training plan built for the COG and for CSC. To move forward as organizations. We are also deep into the implementation of our enterprise finance system. This was the kind of the first major contracting one that we brought across the line where both organizations said, let's. Do this together. Let's leverage together the possibility of getting a, we both need to update our systems. We might be able to save some money. We might be able to learn how to work in partnership, or we might be able to get our teams working side by side and our finance teams are getting along great. The enterprise solution is really going to modernize our finances, which is great because both agencies have very complicated finances. With the amount of different grant streams we have and things of that nature. That is scheduled for a go-live on July one and right now all systems are go. Everything is looking fantastic on that. And then right around the corner, the three months later. Is our planned implementation of a joint HR solution. We bid this together and we realized that the lift was a little bit heavy, even though it was different people. And the HR solution is of course intimately tied to the finance solution because it contains compensation and time off. And benefits information and things of that information. So by slowing that down for a quarter. It allows us to make sure the finance system is finally honed and that we have the right pathways built for the HR solution. And then lastly, I think you all know that. Part of our partnership focus in terms of where we might be able to combine forces and leverage much greater is with our small administrative units. Our HR teams are three people apiece. Our tech services teams are five, six people apiece or in. And our finance teams are small as well and and we really believe that by having those teams kind of working together. Can mitigate the impacts of like having one person on vacation and that's thirty-three percent of your team for the next two weeks. So our first real deep foray into this is Community Services Consortium found themselves in a place where they asked for some. IT support. Our tech services director, Jason Sealy, was able to step in and assist in some help with the IT team. Over at Community Services Consortium. This is the first time we've provided. This kind of leadership across both tech services groups or any of the administrative services groups. All of the reports that I'm getting is that this is working really, really well for Community Services Consortium. It's still working well for Council of Governments. And just in this short one-month period or so, we've been able to adopt some other. Mutual help desk tool and a mutual deployment tool and things of that nature. So it's like. Kind of organically, just through this process, we're finding other efficiencies. Now, I'll remind the Commissioners, this exercise in this body of work is really about saying, how do we continue to serve the communities better? This is not an exercise in how do we squeeze our teams to get the same amount and we eliminate people. That's not where we're going. It is the recognition that. There is strength in numbers and a team of six can do substantially more than two teams of three. And we believe that there's still plenty of work to be done by our finance teams, our tech teams and our HR teams that the conversation is about, how do we get them together? And get them to do, be able to do more.
And then the other piece of this whole conversation is co-location and a single application and one thing and another in terms of actual frontline. In front, we're facing service, but that's a longer conversation, of course.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. We are still talking about co-location in the Albany office and I think that is. You, that's a reality, it's just timing and we both have to get over our budget hurdles as well of the course of this next month to figure out. And what that looks like. As a more practical matter, we are also looking at joint space in Corvallis. We have a lease right now. There's an option to expand that leasing area right now, which is one of the options on the table. We are also considering a different site. And at the very least, that puts us in a place of having some co-location of staff, including the veteran staff. And we are still talking about Samaritans willingness or possibility to have their veteran staff as well. It's like enhancing that veterans team is still part of the strength of the radar.
That's great.
And that's it for my report, so you'll get. I won't do thirty minutes unless the wheels come off this thing completely.
Well, when you were talking about combining CSC and the COG. I guess it's been a couple of years now at our previous. County Administrator. Instigation. Combining natural areas and 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 parks. And the fairgrounds, the events, two very small departments. Both had a lot of. Stuff and grounds and so there was. During COVID, already doing some staff sharing, but. Very similar to what you mentioned. This was not a cost-saving exercise of. Figuring out who can we eliminate of these two. Two of our smaller departments were combined, but the idea was to add depth. And add a possibility for advancement within that department because there was. There were more positions in the. In the combined department and as far as we can tell, it's working well and. It. Requires both department heads to want to head in that direction. And which was. Our case and and so I think there's. A good example there of. Keeping the same number of people, but be more efficient and and just some economies of scale. Back to the mobility hub and I like to point out. Uh back to the mobility hub, and I like to point out, this is not a fancy name for a bus stop. Uh yes, there are buses, uh but um. Uh I'm thinking of the artist's rendition of both um what both facilities would would look like. And I I'm thrilled that uh this was the. And and I'm sure a competitive process that this was the best project um. And uh this is uh ODOT funding, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think we're all uh familiar with how uh competitive um. Uh some of those grants can can be, so this is uh exciting news. You mentioned, what was it, two point six million?
From point, two point four.
Two point four from ODOT. Uh that that's not the complete. Uh price tag for the two centers, is it? There there is additional funding.
I I think that's to get us across the finish line for all the final planning and all of that work. I don't believe that's the full build amount.
But we do, we do have other funding sources lined up. So um well, that that's uh great. It it seems like a wonderful time to e- encourage. Transit and I remember something about there was a possibility for bike share. I've been a bike share station at least at uh OSU and uh really creates some uh. Some nice possibilities, so tell the team congratulations on on uh. On on that one, because it uh a a wonderful uh. Uh project and uh it's nice to, well, we know it's wonderful and it's nice to have that uh. Um emphasized by uh Mr. ODOT and here's the money. So I'm I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. As far as the overall report, uh annual report, uh I thought the format and uh. Very readable pictures. I mean, it looks good. There there's, there's real information there. Um uh I I like the. Um the the format and I think um. It's more likely people will dive in to um see what's going on and and then um breaking out the. Overall COG and then the what's going on uh in the three counties is separate reports, I think is a. A very worthwhile effort and and for uh kind of a. First time uh effort uh. Communications is a good thing, uh especially when uh we have as much to communicate as as the COG does. I mean, it's uh it it's critical. We need uh people to know about the programs and. Also people to support, support the program, so uh congratulations on that. Keep that up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for uh Mr. Cog?
No, I I just want to comment that it's, I always appreciate reports. It's useful to get a sense for what's going on. Um uh in terms of the services you all are providing, both very much to our Benton County residents, but also a- across the region. Um and uh it's such a complex organization that uh it's a good reminder to see that data regularly. Um and I continue to look forward to uh perhaps more interaction over time with uh our public health programs. So that they are, I you know, fully aware of all of the ways in which the work that the COG does complements. What uh the public health teams do, because some of those pieces that might be in a Health and Human Services Department in Lane on Loma County. Are are lodged with you or with CSC here. And uh so I think sometimes we forget there's another leg to the stool. The senior services in particular would come to mind.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh in. You you probably uh wouldn't be in a place of seeing that differentiation in terms of our reporting this year. But the commitment that we made last year after putting our first annual report out is last year, we did an annual report. And we did a county bike reports. And the commitments that we made for each of our member agencies, now this is not every city, but it is most of these. Uh was that this year we would try to do a member addendum that was a single pager or two pager specific to that area. So you are welcome to, if uh you get any questions about the material that's lodged here in the Benton County report. If you have any constituents that are asking for a greater level of refinement, we do have a report for Cor- Corvallis and Fallonath and a day or so. We've got uh reports for individual member agencies to to try and refine this down to kind of what that footprint really means for the city.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it's our first got, uh some of it feels a little bit lighter than others because it's really trying to get it all put together. I think it'll be even better next year, but it's, it might be helpful for people who uh want to see a little bit more. When they look at the numbers of meals on wheels or what have you, they go, well, what does that really mean for me? Particularly if there's.
Yeah, yeah, from Monroe, for instance, yeah. Thank you. That's great to know.
Yeah.
Uh and so you you present all those cities too, so I mean, uh community member can even go and find the video or the audio and watch it.
All right, okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh it it says we should take a brief break. Can we do the. Do a couple more items um in in honor of our. Uh one of the first proclamation is Ryan Vogt.
Yeah, but I'm okay. Do you want a break in between the two? Yeah, I would love to do it.
Okay, we will take.
Personally, I would love a break right now, all right?
Okay, we will take a five-minute break. And then uh we will probably have another break after the proclamation.
Recording stopped.
Before the public hearing at eleven.
Was the consent calendar? And I have one minor adjustment, page one thirty-nine. Of the packet towards the bottom of the page. Starts out, starts out Malone stressed and then. Up lines down O D Fs and instead of communication person should be community wildfire forester position. Page one thirty-nine and of. The minutes it's page three of ten.
So I will move to improve the consent calendar with that change on those minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Consent calendar is approved. And next up proclamation six point one. In the matter of proclaiming May twenty twenty-three as older Americans month in Benton County. Ryan Booth. Welcome back.
So. It's my honor and privilege to take a moment to be able to read for you your proclamation for. Older Americans month. In Benton County so. In the matter of proclaiming May as older Americans month in Benton County proclamation number two zero two three dash oh one oh. Benton County is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers. Our county's older community members have contributed to creating a stronger and better connected community during the time that they have resided within the county. As a county, there are no accomplishments we have made without the historical knowledge, wisdom. And efforts from our senior citizens to continue building a more inclusive and accessible home for all. Over seventeen percent of Benton County's residents or sixty-five years of age or older. These community members have and continue to enrich and strengthen our county in countless ways. Whether it is through their participation in our local workforce, their service to the community, the patronage of our small and emerging businesses. Or their contributions to building a more resilient and inclusive county, we acknowledge and honor the significant efforts put forth by our elderly community members. We recognize the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental and emotional well-being, no matter your age. Our community can can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by. Promoting home and community-based services that support independent living. Involving older adults in community planning events and other activities. And providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead and mentor. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that May two thousand twenty-three is older Americans month in Benton County. And all community members are encouraged to take time this month to recognize older adults. And the people who serve and support them as vital parts of our community adopted the sixteenth day of May two thousand twenty-three and signed to the sixteenth day of May two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of proclamation number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi. It's wrong on the proclamation in the packet.
Two zero two three dash oh one oh.
It just says a twenty twenty number, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now get back to work.
This was fun.
All right. Next up. Six point two in the matter of proclaiming May is wildfire preparedness month in Benton County is Brian Lee. With us online. You're up, Brian.
We can skip one and go to the next and come back to Brian.
Right? We are skipping to six point three in the matter of proclaiming May is Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month in Benton County. Sarah Siddiki. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, thank you all. In the matter of proclaiming May as Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month in Benton County proclamation number P two zero two-three dash zero zero nine. The month of May brings a national celebration of Asian and Pacific Islander American heritage. The month of May was chosen to honor two specific dates. May seventh eighteen forty-three, when the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States. In May tenth eighteen sixty-nine, the anniversary of the completion of the transcontinental railroad, which was laid primarily by Chinese immigrants. The Asian and Pacific Islands diaspora includes forty-eight different countries and it covers a wide variety of people, cultures, languages, religions and experiences. Benton County has been home to many Asian and Pacific Islander people and communities. In eighteen eighty, Chinese immigrants established a small Corvallis Chinatown within the Avery Helm Historic District, which was unfortunately lost in a fire in the nineteen twenties. In the early eighteen hundreds Hawaiians came to what is now Oregon to participate in our fur trade. And today we have over fifty individual cultural groups from throughout Asia and the Pacific Islands living here in Oregon. We celebrate centuries of cultural connections between Asian and Pacific Islander community members. We also celebrate our visitors from other countries who are studying, working and living in our communities. Acknowledging the heritage of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans includes acknowledging our history of discrimination and exclusion. In the past, the Oregon Constitution forbade Chinese refugees and immigrants from settling here and in eighteen eighty-six. Oregon hosted an anti-Chinese convention in Portland. National and state laws continue to push xenophobia that have harmed our Asian Pacific Islander communities. We acknowledge the exclusionary practices and laws within Oregon that have historically harmed Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. While also acknowledging the resiliency of these communities to persevere despite the barriers they experience. We must continue our work towards making our communities safe and welcoming for all. Asian and Pacific Islanders still face discrimination, which at times has led to violence and fatal consequences for members of this expansive community. We show solidarity and support for all Asian American and Pacific Islander Americans, not just during May, but every day. Therefore, be hereby proclaimed that May is Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month in Benton County. And all community members are encouraged to join in this observance and celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
I would move approval of proclamation number twenty twenty-three of zero zero nine. Second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries and thank you, Sarah. And now we will to six point two in the matter of proclaiming May is wildfire preparedness month in Benton County. Welcome, Brian Lee.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Just first off, I want to say thank you for letting me do this proclamation every year. It's obviously very important. It really is highlighted, of course, by our Labor Day fires throughout Oregon in twenty twenty and the ongoing risk of wildfires as we move forward. And I also want to say on a quick plug, we did receive the Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant Award. I know some of you know that, but I just wanted to formally state that as well. So more to come on that. And with that, if you're ready, I will read the proclamation for wildfire preparedness month.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. In the matter of proclaiming May as wildfire preparedness month in Benton County. The threat of wildfires greatly impacts our entire region, including the residents of Benton County, Oregon. And the impact of climate change has greatly increased the risk of wildfires throughout Oregon. When individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. Wildfire Preparedness Month was designed to bring awareness of the threat of wildfires to our communities. The Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private and volunteer agencies. To inform individuals on how to take action through our public education campaigns and our community exercises. Residents of residents, businesses and visitors of Benton County are urged to plan ahead. For all disasters and encourage their family and friends to do so by participating in annual readiness events and drills. Benton County Emergency Management and the Benton County Emergency Operations Center staff will continue to participate in monthly training and exercises and planning activities. Therefore, be it proclaimed that May is wildfire preparedness month in Benton County. And all community members, businesses and visitors are encouraged to develop their own emergency preparedness plans, practice evacuation drills. And join in this observance.
Well, thank you, Brian. I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I would be happy to move approval of proclamation number twenty twenty-three dash zero one one. Second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Did have a question, Brian, you mentioned a grant that we've received and just. What, what? What can we do with? This grant?
Right, real quick, it was the grant that would help fund the hazard mitigation coordinator to help execute some of our projects listed in this. Community wildfire protection plan and we also got funding in that application for some vegetative fuels reduction. And then city or not city, Monroe, I'm sorry, Monroe Rural Fire Protection District got the grant award as well. So we're going to coordinate some of our efforts and sync up a little bit more. So it's all about wildfire risk reduction in our rural communities and it's very much focused on the rural communities.
Great, and I assume there's coordination with the O D F. Firewise program and. It's nice to have. Different agencies participating.
And we'll also be able to not only link up with O D F and O S F M, some of our local communities. But this position can also help draw down on some of the FEMA mitigation grants as well.
Oh, great. Well, thank you for the reading the proclamation and for your efforts helping keep Benton County safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right, we have a public hearing that we'll have after eleven o'clock. Is Sean McGuire is listed next.
Or we could do Damian's.
Amanda. You want to, are you ready, Damian? Well, this is eight point two discussion and direction regarding adverse consequences to counties due to the September. First twenty twenty-two federal court order limiting admissions to and shortening treatment at Oregon State Hospital, not Damian Sands.
Good morning, commissioners. A lot of this, I think I'm just going to lean on Vance as well to sort of shepherd through this process. It's my understanding that we are brought together today to have a discussion about lending support behind a letter, which will be. Instructed after this meeting to discuss the potential of. Benton County and I want to get the right legal terms. I saw two Latin words, one was.
Amici, is that the last one?
Yeah.
Amici.
Amici. Amici. Okay, so basically, which if I. So if I understand again, Vance, I'm just going to keep looking at you on this one, okay? It's my understanding that basically means that we will be acting in concert with our fellow counties, but not act as a name litigant. Which is, I would describe as being a key difference. So in other words, lending support rather than just actually acting as a sole filer. So it's my understanding that both Washington and Marion County are moving forward with the discussion. Well, sorry, with action targeted towards O H A and its recent response around the Mossman order. So in terms of this venue, I'm. I'm going to also just begin lean on the committee or all of you as commissioners to be able to sort of. Plug me with questions and maybe more have a generalized discussion around this issue so that we can sort of get to our general consensus hopefully and. And get approval from you and all. Disapprove whether we wish to move forward with the construction of a letter in support of this matter. I can, if you, I don't know how much, I know that we've had the attachment that that hopefully you have had a chance to review, which is the letter from Marion County. I don't know how it's titled in the packet. I think it was called a call to action or something rather, okay? So, and I think that was shared through A O C as a document. So for context around that piece, A O C M H P, so us as an organization have been discussing this matter, obviously since day one. It has obviously gotten to a place in which A O C has sort of carried this because of its overall impact to the county. For things beyond us as a local mental health authority. It is really broad in its in its impact and obviously we'll talk about law enforcement, talking about hospitals, we're talking about. All of the generalized services, homeless community in terms of having to navigate this really challenging situation. So, you know, I think where I stand and as we've had discussions over this last year around this matter and the burden to our community. We recognize that there is risk and that risk ultimately falls into a few categories, one which is obviously personal, but the other is around liability. Risk exposure as an organization and specifically as a county entity, what that might look like. It sounds like, if I'm not mistaken, Vance, is that right now we are engaged in a, for one of the better word, tennis match with. O H A and other parties in terms of trying to get the ball over the net in terms of trying to to them, trying. For them to accept some type of either risk share model and or to have existing language which is, to be clear, which has been in place. Ever since we've been signing C F As with the state in which we can have provisions relating to depending on cost, depending on provisions of service. But these pieces remain within there and ultimately that that risk exposure is shared at both the state and at the county level. In understanding when we navigate these very, very complex cases, these situations, that that element of risk is is going to be something that is understood. From that liability standpoint. As it stands today, if I am correct, the risk exposure now remains solely with the county. Vance, I am going to lean on you.
Keep going.
You know, this isn't, I think it isn't, I've only played a lawyer, I'm not actually a lawyer, you know, right? It's one of these things. And so I do want to be very sensitive about what I say because obviously, you know, there's. My sphere of sphere of influence around being a behavioral health director. I don't want to necessarily speak to the liability component in greater detail, but I will say if we're just looking at it from a programmatic standpoint and. I think maybe what might be easiest here, commissioners, is to give an example. So an example might look like in which. In the past, we would have had an individual who would reside at the state level. At R S H, at State Hospital. And they would be deemed at a certain point at a level of wellness in which they could be returned to our community. And at which point then we would integrate and start to outreach and engage in services being provided for that individual. In other words, that person would be receptive, they would be healthy enough to be able to navigate, not fully in a place of total illness, but. Healthy enough to be able to navigate the community with all of these supports wrapped around them. That's how it used to be. What we now see is that we have a firm timeline and depending upon that individual and what they've been involved in, that's set as short as thirty days, as long as a year. In which individuals have been released now directly back into the county, regardless of where they are at from a clinical perspective. That means we are seeing individuals who we in the past would deem as being too much of a risk to reside back at the community level. So now that places the burden on the jail system, puts a burden on us as an organization. Spying on our local E D and it puts a burden on our community providers to be able to navigate individuals who we feel should be residing in the state hospital. We have no recourse related to that in terms of other than just waiting for an event to occur and for that individual to possibly be returned to the state hospital. Which, if I play that through, in another six months, there's a chance that that individual comes back out because of these hard and fast timelines. If you add another element, and this is, this is, I think, perhaps the really sort of salient concern piece. Now let's say an individual. Gets released from the state hospital. They are engaged in some type of an act, whether it's self harm or harm to somebody else. And that results in some type of litigious act because of that event. Our risk exposure and that related is because of what is residing at the county level. We're engaging services, we're trying to make this work for everyone involved. If we were to say, well, in our defense, we don't feel that individual was ready to leave the state hospital. The state hospital in turn can then say. We're under the most hospital order clearly states this person stays here for that for this amount of time. By that, by that definition, we've come through the front door, we've done it, we've had that person. Received therapeutic services and then they've left through that same door back to the community as is required by us by the hospital. So in other words, we have done everything to the letter and by the book. So there's no onus and or responsibility at the state level about whether that person was ready to return to our community. And obviously, as you can see, because of that. That that places a greater burden, a greater onus on the county and really exposes us to risk should something, which hopefully will not happen, but should something go awry. Hopefully that encapsulates. Some of this.
And just let me just jump in on the corrections side of this. As you know, all are acutely aware, we have something happening today that might address it through our election. But those individuals who are returned to Benton County and they've been sent up to the state hospital to determine whether they have the capacity to aid and assist in their own defense. For the criminal proceedings that originally brought them into the system. If they are kicked back to Benton County because the timeline has expired, not because they've been treated, not because they've been assessed. Those individuals go right back into our matrix evaluation system. And whether or not they, the significance of the crime they've committed or alleged committed, their history, et cetera. Places them in a position where they're released. So not only do we have the the mental health concern, the O H A issue. State taking no responsibility for this individual being sent back to the county without any treatment. But we also have the law enforcement corrections risk because our jail was so small and these people, we know some of these folks have no. No capacity to function outside of the jail. Given their their mental health issues, yet the severity of the crime and their history is not justified, it's keeping them in a facility. So we have a double whammy for Benton County and that that ratchets up our risk exposure dramatically. Now that the level of exposure is offset at some degree because our population is smaller.
It is, we're part eight to ten right now residing at the state hospital.
So, so you could see there's a, there's a push-pull, but the the bottom line for us is. Individuals returning to our jail system for evaluation, whether the matrix out creates a challenge for jail. Creates liability for us and honestly, it's a risk for the community depending on the individuals. And so we are being asked to not take any active participation, but to join a letter support or send a letter. By indicating our support for Washington County and Marion County's efforts to either through the amicus curate process. I know they've asked Judge Mossman to reconsider. uh either through the amicus curate process. Um, I know they've asked Judge Mossman to reconsider. But also to um work with AOC to push back on some of the efforts that disability rights of Oregon and there's one or the organ.
Yeah, the Portland organization and I'm blanking that.
Defenders of, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Uh, that, those two organizations are seeking legislative changes that would decrease the number of the amount of time that uh folks charged with felonies would have to go through the evaluation process. They're also pushing for a prohibition on sending folks charged with misdemeanors to be sent up to uh OHA for evaluation, which according to uh the sheriff's office, there's a significant number of that category of of our AICs who are there because of person to crime, person to person crimes. So uh they 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 have a tendency to to I guess, take out some of their their mental health frustrations, uh, inabilities on people, not just theft, uh, not just stealing a bike, but you know, person to person crimes, which are always of greater significance to the community.
So, yeah, I think you said matrix, it's B pre, right? Is that my correct? Okay. And then I just, Chair, I wanted to mention too that we have Sheriff Jeff Van Arsdale and our jail commander, John Devaney on uh online. So I didn't know if you want to check with them and see if they had.
Correct.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Wise. I just didn't know if there's any questions, so I had Captain Devaney, he's the jail commander and and the subject matter expert really in this arena available if you had any questions for him as it relates to the jail. Uh, Damian was correct. We currently have eight housed as of this morning in state hospital system. Um, and you said, like you said, it's anywhere from usually eight to ten people.
And I I just want to comment that um the Mossman order and this entire suit from disability rights Oregon puts the system in a really awkward place. Because the the reason they filed suit um was to protect civil rights of individuals that ended up in the Oregon State Hospital. And that makes perfect sense. However, it has had a host of unintended consequences when it comes to both our ability to provide mental health care, behavioral health care and uh to operate the um the the jail system in the state uh and the courts. Uh, it's been a huge wrinkle for the courts as well. The judges end up dismissing some of these cases because of the fact that the person can't aid and assist in their own defense. Um, and there's no, and the jail's the wrong place for them. Uh, but that does not necessarily protect community safety. So uh it's it's a problem. So I'm strongly in support of um sending a letter supporting uh the uh Marion and Washington County um uh effort. Um, and I will see how it evolves. Uh, uh, if they pursue counter suit, I'm not sure that we would necessarily go that route. But I want to uh um uh support our fellow counties in trying to find whatever kind of resolution we can um to get out of this wick, sticky wicket that we've been placed in by the Mossman order. It's not affecting only folks that are justice involved. It's also affecting folks that um would be civilly committed if they're in a room at the state hospital.
That is.
Um, and that uh are guilty except for insanity. So it's it's a larger problem.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. So I am also in support of sending a letter. Um, you know, I think there were legitimately some cases that were concerning. And so I see where this, you know, the Mossman order came from. However, it's um, you know, one size fits all is not ever a good solution, in my opinion. Um, you know, it's kind of arbitrary based on the level of offense, you know, misdemeanor versus felony. Um. You know, each individual has unique circumstances and unique needs. Which leads to us, I mean, this leads to just a misuse of our jail, liability for our staff and for Benton County, doesn't help the individual at all. Um. And so, yeah, I I am not in favor of one size fits all and I I support sending that letter.
Oh, you you said Captain Devaney's uh available. I guess I would ask if he had any uh thoughts that he wanted to uh add at this time.
Uh, like it, um, I, Vance had asked me about this last week and I forwarded him some of the thoughts on this. I mean, Mossman's been sort of a a a good thing and a bad thing. I mean, coming out of COVID, the backlog was huge on getting people to um the state hospital. Um, that's helped decrease it a little bit. We were only a month now instead of three or four months holding somebody in custody prior to going up there. So that's that's better. Um, but and we haven't seen a ton of the the backside of it of where people come back and they're, you know, waiting for a while because they've just time limited out of the state. And they're trying to find um, you know, places in the community to restore them. Um, so I mean, we are, we have one person in custody now that looks like could be here for a little bit on doing that. And we've had one other that came back and uh she was here for a time. Um, but, you know, it's the, you know, I I told the sheriff, I was like, for a jail, it's it's sort of a hit and miss for things, but for the community as a whole, um, you know, keeping people up there until they're you know, at least a little bit stable so that mental health, it's easier for mental health to work with them. Seems like that would be a better idea than just saying, okay, based on this time, they have to come back. Um, but, you know, again, it's it's been sort of a a good and bad thing for us at the jail level. Um, but again, like they could you know, Vance talked, our our jail wasn't built for uh being a mental health institution and we, you know, to hold people for extended periods of time that have those types of issues, there's only so much we can do for them here. Um. So, yeah, I I I believe the the things that laid out in the letter that AOC put together um made sense as far as what they wanted to do moving forward.
All right. Uh, thank you. I guess my thoughts, uh, it it doesn't make any sense to me to have uh arbitrary uh time limits and and uh the timer goes off and you're you're done. That that uh that uh doesn't make any sense to me. That it it's needs to be uh based on the individual evaluation and uh you shouldn't be released rather than you have to be released uh because the bell went off. So, uh, I'm uh uh al- also in favor of uh uh sending the letter. Um, do we have any other uh questions or do you have any uh further thoughts?
Thank you, Commissioners. I, and we all support this and I in terms of just your support. It's greatly valued. Um, I, you know, we're in a separate conversation with Vance. Um, that actually is around the signing of our CFA with the state. And that is also, it has an impact there. So just to make you aware that we had initially, you know, moved this down six months. They're now discussing moving in additional six months because of the language that resides around this. So it uh it's going to be an on- ongoing process. Uh, so I really think, you know, anything that can do to help sort of, you know, just nudge that, I think is great. It's going to be really appreciated by all involved. So thank you for that support.
Yeah, and I just want to tag, I just want to comment on the CFA, um, that this funding agreement in the state. In years past, when we have had an issue with the agreement with the contract, Benton County has zero leverage to force any changes at this stage. So we basically want to take our medicine. Um, but this topic is a little different. It's got the big counties are pushing back hard, which could very well benefit the smaller counties like Benton County who on our own, we can't push changes that protect ourselves. So this particular topic may generate some change in these state contracts that have benefits to all counties.
Uh, Damon, you you mentioned, uh, I think you mentioned something about the legislature. Give me, oh, uh, in- involved in this, uh, is that part of the solution or is it?
A- absolutely. I think it has to, this does have to rise to a level in which I think both political administrative wings are involved in this process because it's complex, it has high levels of risk exposure and uh, you know, this is a statewide issue. I mean, it's, I, you know, whether you're a small frontier county or you're an urban, this is going to be, it's going to be impacting. And again, I just want to thank you, Commissioner, for for first pointing this out. And that is that, you know, the intent behind uh DRO's actions were around civil liberties. So that should be committed. Uh, but of course, you know, it's it's one of these ones where that's best intention, that's some of the the road to somewhere is parked with a lot of good intentions.
Yeah. Yeah, and I want to point out that legislatively, there are two things going on there. One is uh an attempt to codify elements of the Mossman order in state law. And I think that that um that is not going anywhere very fast because there's so much disagreement about um the approach. Uh, I'm not sure what's going to happen, but then there's the liability issue and the liability issue um got stranded in the Republican walkout. Uh, there was a bill that was going to be introduced in the Senate. Um, it was in uh Rules Committee and uh the, what, they made an agreement across the houses, the chambers that it would be introduced in the House Rules Committee instead, that was supposed to have a hearing last week.
Yeah.
Um, and then moved forward to keep that legislation alive. But that would also only be a temporary fix. I think it was something about putting together a risk pool um approach um and working with the Department of Administrative Services at the state. So it's kind of an extension of what they did the last couple of years. So um it's it's a bigger problem and it's one that is gonna remain um horny for the next session, I'm sure.
And but while I have just access to the microphone, I want to thank Captain Devaney as well. Um, you know, he 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 and his team really showed uh so much of this that uh it is falls under our daily week as well. So uh we really appreciate them being great partners in this and just really acknowledge that lift uh that they have to do on a daily basis around uh basically uh transforming their work into uh an extension of the state hospital. So, thank you. This is anything else, Commissioners.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. I know this was kind of a last minute addition. So thank you everyone for scrambling to get us the information that we need to make this decision.
Yes.
Okay, if we're ready, I would entertain a motion.
Sure. Uh, I would move that we accept the request for support um contained in the Marion County Board of Commissioners April eleventh, twenty twenty-three memorandum and direct staff to write a letter in support of that effort. Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
What is it? Effort?
Effort.
Effort.
But somebody was paying attention.
Obviously. It's hard to listen and talk at the same time, right?
It is.
Karen Malone.
Yes.
The last presentation with Sean and Jen, they are ready whenever uh you are. They know that you've got public hearing at eleven and I think uh they were hoping there was going to be just a brief break where they could set up either before or after that public hearing time. So leave that with you, but we'll queue them to come in um and uh be prepared to get ready on.
Uh, I think the
At their agenda.
We we've got a minute before eleven. Uh, why don't we do the public hearing? I think that will be relatively short and then uh can have a short break after that, um, so they can get uh set up.
Open, I forgot about the budget pieces after that, or that is the public hearing piece. Okay.
All right. Well, uh can I start introducing it now?
The public hearing, yep, I see Jen is uh on screen and ready to rock and roll.
Okay, uh, next up is uh public hearing number one in the matter of uh public hearing regarding approval of supplemental budget twenty-three, one, one, one. Uh, Jen Ambule.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize for not being in the room, but I've caught a cold and I didn't feel like sharing my germs with anyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Mr. Cragger decided to come in and represent the physical side of financial services today. I am here before you to just once again go over supplemental budget twenty-three, one, one, one. Within that budget, there are two funds that are asking to increase appropriations. The first being General Fund and within the General Fund, the Public Safety Operations would increase thirty-two thousand and ninety-one dollars. Again, that is a federal homeland security grant for EOC position specific training. So they did receive a new revenue source and are requesting to increase appropriations. Following that would be our trust fund and within trust operations, we are requesting to increase appropriations in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the repair of logging roads and the concrete floor at the Bazell Barn. And then the funding source for this would be increased logging revenue within the Memorial Forest. And that is the very short and sweet supplemental budget I have for you today.
All right, um. Can we go to uh asking for uh public testimony?
Open the public hearing.
Is that next, Vance?
Yep.
All right, are there any members of the public that was to wish to uh testify at this time? All right, um. Hearing none, um. Any questions or additional information that we need from Jen? Well, I now close the public testimony. And um we can deliberate or advance the resolution.
I would move that we adopt resolution uh R twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven in the matter of supplemental budget two, three, one, one, one. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And and I'd point out this is another double oh seven uh resolution or like we had one last week. All right, um.
Jen, is this the last supplemental that we'll see for this fiscal year?
Unfortunately, I'm going to say no. I have learned of one more. We are going to squeak in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um. Uh, now, uh, next up is uh Department Department Reports, uh, eight point one greenhouse gas emissions and climate action plan update for twenty twenty-two, Sean McGuire and Jen Brown. He he uh he said he wanted a couple minutes to, uh, thanks, Rick. Uh, set up.
Well, to get set up, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, so wonderful time of the year again where we talk to you about greenhouse gas emissions and our climate action plan. Uh, before we uh start, I wanted to recognize our two other staffers. Uh, Sidney Hundo, who you've seen in this office right here as our, this year's climate intern. And Michael Gardner Brown, who is uh our intern three years ago and is now our climate coordinator. So um, I want to thank them and recognize because we would do nothing without those two as well as your support to have them on board. So, wanted to start it off. So thank you. Um. There we go. So uh what we want to do today is uh by proclamation back in a resolution back in the twenty eighteen, actually. This is our annual update of our greenhouse gas emissions as well as our climate action plan, success stories, and where we're going to go. Uh, uh, I'm going to start off the first half. Uh, I'm going to go over our greenhouse gas inventory as well as forecasting. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. Uh, forecasting where we're going in the near future. Then Jen's going to take it uh the second half and talking about our success stories, the great work that this county is doing as well as looking at a roadmap uh and a scenario builder to see where we need to go to uh meet our goal for twenty thirty. Just so we're clear, um, there are people that sells uh either on Zoom or on Facebook, just to make sure everyone's aware of our greenhouse gas goal. We need to be at fifty percent of twenty-ten levels by twenty-thirty, which is only six or seven years from now. And then it'd be net zero by twenty fifty. Uh, some of the upgrades, if you will, and uh big issue items from the inventory itself. Uh some of the upgrades, if you will, and uh big issue items from the inventory itself. First, we actually added more facilities and more meters that we had in the past. We always knew we were missing some. Because of how fast and how we have uh fine tuned our inventory, we had the time to reach out to both Consumer Power and a Pacific. To capture those additional sources. So uh again, that's all Sydney and Michael, when I say we. They're there. Um and just making sure that we have this, I think we're ninety nine percent of all the meters that we have on uh as of now, so that was a big thing. The other one is we're gonna get into uh and a few slides is carbon capturing at Bazell. Um I'll get I'll get into that a little later. And then also uh Michael and myself, uh we created the scenario builder. Uh really looking at how all these different factors, almost like a calculator. Can really help us in that roadmap moving forward and Jen's gonna have that to very end. So just for crystal clear, um this inventory and our goal is for Benton County government, not Benton County. Uh Corvallis, the city of Corvallis has one for their government as well as the city. This is just for our government. Uh we have tracked it, we tracked it back to twenty ten because that is our baseline year. Uh our current sources are the utilities you see before you as well as refrigerants, which is very little and this year's none. And staff committee, which is far from none, uh one of our biggers. Obviously, the biggest um impact to our inventory this year was Caliponia and as. Aggregating and filling up this building and we're gonna get into some of the details and the ripple effect of what that has caused as far as our greenhouse gas emissions and our inventory. This is an um. This is the first time we've really had the chance to do this because of the work we've done with solar generation as well as our offsets. So I want to show you our actual equation of how we do things and uh how the inventory is set up. One is total emissions, uh which should be about thirty nine, thank you, uh thirty nine hundred uh tons. Then we subtract our solar generation uh at our five sites, which I know highlight there, at a hundred and eighty tons and then our offsets. We're gonna talk about the uh offsets at Brazil, the potential offsets with your approval, but this is the first time that we have non-electric offsets in our inventory. That is a trend that's going to continue. And so that's why we want to really highlight our equations to you have an understanding of what that means. So our total net emissions is three thousand five hundred and fifty tons. In a graph form, this is what it's like from twenty ten. So I wanna step here for a second and see um to kind of walk us through. Started twenty ten, you can kind of see a relatively stable line until twenty nineteen and COVID. Those little bobs that are gonna highlight that with fleet and a couple of slides. Obviously, then twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, well, COVID action, and then now we're back on track to go back up. That was facetious. Unfortunately, this is where our goal is. So we're going up and our goal is beneath us. And uh this is why we're here today to start looking at how we can achieve that goal moving forward. Uh just so we're clear, uh when I say tons, that's metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, our former fossil, we used to call it mitochondria. Well, how are you like? So um so this is where we need to go. Unfortunately, we're trending in the other direction. One of the two slides that you commissioners have asked for in the past, one is to look at those emissions for F T E and by square foot. So this is a slide for F T E. This actually gives us a a little better um. We call it a success story. We're still going in the wrong direction, but it does kind of show over time how we have with our staff. Again, from twenty eleven to twenty fourteen and all these slides with our utility, that's when we brought on Sunset. So you're just gonna see that trend upward until twenty thirteen when we purchase Sunset. And then we kind of cascade down until last year where we're starting to go back up. So this is uh usage emissions for F T E. Her square foot was um not doable this year for a few reasons. One, I said that we brought on other meters, some of those are the streetlights over on twenty on the way to Albany as well as water pumps, so we brought on non. Building square footage meters, both for consumer and from Pacific. We also have facilities like downstairs of Avery, Sunset is kind of built like we have empty space, B O C is empty. And so it skewed the square footage because we had it, but we're not in it. Especially since we're in a Caliponia, and that's gonna be a common theme of our presentation in this era of flux that we're in with our facilities and our greenhouse gas inventory. This is our emissions by sources. Back to twenty ten, uh you will see um again. Kind of a steady line electricity as we became more efficient. Another common theme is our public works department is just doing great. Great work in making us more efficient. Commuting uh because we had to back cast kind of fluctuates. I'm only gonna focus, as we generate, to focus on the top three uh just because of time and focus. So on the natural gas in the bottom, again, public works, all kudos. Uh really decreasing our natural gas from about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen until uh twenty twenty one, that uptick. Is people coming back into the office, all facilities had us minor tick and Caliponia. That's what this uptick uh on natural gases. Another way to look at it is just from last year, again, you look at those three biggies um on the left. Basically vehicles, whether fleet and commuting as well as our electricity. Another way to look at that is we've kind of like the pie chart, which kind of showcases when we're, the reason why we're focusing on those three is that's ninety percent of our inventory. Gas, water, waste and refrigerants are all less than ten percent of our inventory. I wanna stop for a second and say, obviously, water and waste are huge. Environmental impacts and issues that this county is addressing. We've been talking trash for more than a year. You heard Darren Nichols from Community Development come in January or February talking about long range water planning, huge environmental impacts. Just not a huge um a substantial carbon impact.
When we talk about waste, we are not counting the methane emissions that. Flared at the landfill and if.
That's correct.
We did, that would be a totally different calculation too. We're just talking about the what waste that we generate as employees and here at the county.
That is correct. Uh in contrast, great point, Lane has their own, their public works has their own landfill. There's dots, so that that one is included in there. That is not in our inventory.
And I think we just need to be clear about that. Um when this issue came up in the context of our. Potential new facilities, that uh there are emissions that are under our control and there are emissions that are not under our control. Or where we have leverage but not control, and I think that it's helpful to. Keep that in mind as we present these um data because otherwise people um. Will ask and they're confused.
Absolutely. And I'd also comment on the ripple effect that is not included, so we don't include. Things like the compactor, which dramatically reduces Republic Service to be driving around. It's not included inventory, but we know that it has a great impact, uh a good impact of reducing our emissions. So those. Those gray areas are not included in the inventory, but we know, jumping into the the success stories later on, although again, that ripple effect was. So thank you for bringing that up.
Early on, you you mentioned uh Pacific Power and Consumer Power and and I know I've had. Um short discussions with you, there's a uh big difference in there. How they produce the electricity, would you?
I have a, I have a slide on that specifically from our conversation, it's like five or six more. But we'll get to there. Okay, so just focusing on the big. Again, this is usage, this is not including that, that's the next slide. Um again, you see us peaking in twenty thirteen, bring on Sunset. Uh kind of normalizing COVID hits and now we're coming back, all coming back to work. Again, that's skewed on Caliponia and this great shuffle that we're having with all of our facilities. When it comes to electricity during utilities, I'll come back to that uh in a few more slides in the aggregate. Another one I want to showcase was when we start talking about net, I'm gonna stay on this one for a little bit because it it needs some explanation. So the green line on top is our usage. That would be if we did not have any solar panels, we didn't have offsets like Blue Sky, which is the Pacific Power Offset Program. So what we're seeing is that it is going higher, and if it weren't for those, we'd be at the highest levels that we've had in since twenty ten. Then you drop down, you take out the solar, the solar generation of that hundred and eighty tons, and that gives you the blue line. So that's our usage, but then our uh actual emissions is the blue line, which is eleven fifty two. Then the net emissions currently is Blue Sky. Now, a couple of things, you see that yellow line spike up. That is because in talking to Pacific Power, the credits that we have, the blocks that we purchase are so expensive now, they had to cut it in half. So they had to cut, each block is only one hundred to use to be two hundred kilowatts. This is a trend generally hit at the very end. These offsets are becoming more and more expensive. When come next year in our budget, thanks to you on the B O C and our sustainability budget, uh we have program budget. We have allocated uh money for Blue Sky to get twenty five percent of our total Pacific Power usage now consumer. Twenty five percent, so that yellow is gonna dip down. In addition, we are, and I mean as we speak, talking to finance and a a subscription service called uh Oregon Shines. Down even further than that. And again, that's all happening as we speak, there's contracts going between finance and public works. Uh as general show at the end, that's gonna, that yellow line will drop all the way down about seventy five percent total. So these are some great strides right on the precipice uh seeing uh a realization. Okay. So now we're on to fleet fuel, so that was electricity, here's fleet fuel. Those little bouncy lines I was talking about in the earlier slide is because of fleet fuel, because it is so such a third of our uh uh emissions. It has a strong influence. I have that data, that dotted line there. Because before then, it was before the new um tracking system that keeps our um. Fleet has Kate Nicholson. Candidly, we have very little faith in that data beforehand, um and so that's why we're just seeing all those bounces. Since then, it is so much easier, so clean, you go on the B on our in in trend and get all the stated, you can't. I do want to just take thirty more seconds outside of the inventory and to say thank you is um. As you all have been going through the budget hearings for the past few weeks, you've been hearing about um opportunities to uh. Improve our data collection, our data systems. This is such a game changer, and I think sometimes we forget to begin this ripple effect that goes on. As Michael so keenly knows, before that system came in, we had to enter in each and every vehicle this county owns, taking weeks. Uh Sydney uh took about five minutes because of the system, uh keys since three numbers puts it in and we're done. So again, as we're going through the budget hearings and we hear about these data, it is. Unbelievable, and because of that time saved, then we can do the scenario builders, we can go find uh more meters, and so that was amazing, so. Anyway, thank you for those uh back to uh upgrade those systems. So then commuting, the other half of our vehicles. Again, this is going from home to work and how you get there. Uh we started the survey, Jen sends it out in January, started in twenty twenty one, asking staff. Uh what did you do before COVID and what did you do in twenty twenty to kind of get a baseline? Uh we backcasted those using averages back to twenty ten, based on the twenty nineteen information. Those who do not fill that out, we assume drive to work five days a week. That's just unless you fill it up, that's what you do. But we did begin to start uh Jen added in hybrid and electric. How do you drive to work? And so that was insightful, which we'll see in the next round. This is our emissions um. Again, pre twenty nineteen was based on twenty nineteen information, backcasted with like average miles, uh our total staff. Action, uh miles per gallon, which have been increasing on a national level, so that's why that's pre twenty nineteen. Obviously, you see COVID down, but now last year was the highest levels that we've had dating back to twenty ten as far as commuting. So again, going the other direction. Do you want to pause one second? We calculated what the savings are from our staff using alternative fuel vehicles, which are hybrid and electric. Saved about uh seventy five, seventy seventy five tons. There's about thirty hybrids and about ten electric vehicles. What that gives us is insight as we electrify our fleet. And as uh fleet policy will require um sedans and those kind of to be alternative vehicle, it is gonna have a profound impact. On uh on lessening our emissions. Uh another way to look at this, a little more bleak, um before twenty nineteen, seven percent of our staff did not drive. Some was, little was teleworked, that well, it wasn't a big thing before I then, and then alternative ways to get to work. Ever since then. Uh third, did not go uh teleworked. Now it's at seventy uh twenty seven percent and now twenty two percent, so. Story is, on this slide, we are more people, more staff are driving more to and from work. Which is again, taking us in the wrong direction of our greenhouse gas goal. Any questions so far? Or I know there's a lot of numbers coming at you, just kind of setting it up to what we can do about it with Jen. This one, we need to uh have a conversation about. This is something we have not um had the opportunity before. So last year, uh Jesse Ot and Nape, uh Naturalers Parks and Events. Reached out and shared they had set aside uh two seventy three acres at Brazil permanently. Heard the report that's in your packet. That got Michael and I interested in how, what are opportunities that we could use as an offset? The biggest thing uh in order for us to even pursue anything is to have something in writing. Say stating clearly that these lands could be cut, but these could be managed, but that entity said, no. We are not going to, and that's in the plan that's in your packet from Jesse. Once that happened, uh Michael reached out to uh different certification programs as well as King County, Washington. In general, it's a lot of capacity, both in time and money for us to go through that process for relatively small amount of acreage. So the protocol that we found uh in from King County. Said it's kind of goes to this, we use you to uh U S Forest Service to have an initial estimate of carbon capture. And then the protocol says, reduce that number by forty percent. Weird, I just want to be crystal clear, we're in Benton County and Corvallis. There's a lot of eyes on this. We are caught in spot and talking with Jesse and the way that we've done this methodology, we stand behind it. This, I know there's always green scamming or greenwashing these things, uh we're using federal data and then. Really, really uh coming back on that forty percent to make sure that this is a highly conservative number. But before moving on, want to make sure that you all are comfortable with that process and that protocol, or if you had any questions.
I I guess my question, so um. Gold Grove Forest, so you said it captures fifty two tons per year, you see um. Surely it was capturing that much back in two thousand and ten when we took the baseline, we just did not include it in the baseline at that time.
Exactly.
So now we wanna.
It would just be.
Now we do want to count it.
Because we officially come out and say, the background is like, and if you have a question also, Michael, um. That's really the trigger. It means one thing to say, oh, sure, we're not gonna touch that. That's when it gets a little iffy. But to have something on the books that clearly says, we could cut this, but we we will not moving forward. That's what we're hanging our hat on, that's what all the certification requires. So yes, um absolutely, three years.
It's more of an acknowledgement, not not like, hey, this is something new that we're doing to lower, because obviously we've been doing it all along, but okay, acknowledgement.
And that's the, that's really the trigger for like a better word, this is, okay, now you have said this. Four years ago, I had an intern go through all of our lands, estimated back of the envelope, our area, our natural areas. Capture about four thousand tons, which would satisfy. But that's not a good number to use because again, we're not certified, we're not going through that process, but so, but yes, that would be for last year and this year because. It was triggered in twenty twenty one, so. I just want to make sure you're all comfortable moving forward with that. Yeah, okay.
And 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 the idea is uh certification, if we had five hundred acres might make sense, but seventy five acres. It's uh more more overhead than.
Exactly.
A project uh deserves.
And Jesse and uh talking Adam, step another, they just don't have the capacity to be going out there. Also, if a storm comes in, we go out there, we reduce the number. If for some reason. Those lands want to be managed, we just stop it that year. And so talking in advance, there's nothing like legal binding us on this. That's the protocol moving forward. Okay.
It would be different if we'd sold these as carbon credits.
And that was the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the road we went down, that it just wasn't.
No.
Tenable at this point, and Jesse was saying that there's no plans for us to move forward in that direction.
Are, I don't know about technology for estimating carbon um in forests. There any kind of remote sensing technology that's evolving to do this kind of estimation?
Michael?
Right, I would expect that it would have to be calibrated by an awful lot of measurements from a lot of different places in order to be viable, but.
Exactly. Okay.
Who's uh? Just so you you're taking B L M estimate.
U S for services is where we get the 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 first estimate, I guess, calculation. And then we deploy King County's protocol, which they use and has gone through a very rigorous approval process.
And is uh King County where the forty percent reduction comes from?
Exactly. Okay. Well, we'll be including that so for the first time and we'll be moving forward with this. It's not just electricity offsets. Um, but this is the path we're going to need to if we're going to re- reach our goal. Commissioner Muland, now I'm going to get into your question about consumer power and Pacific Power. This is a graph of all the kilowatt hours that we have saved because of the five solar arrays that are facilities. From twenty twelve is when the fairgrounds officially came on like full year up until twenty nineteen. That's why it's flat. So that's all fairgrounds. And now we start escalating up because of the five. We estimate because of the Lincoln and um this. The certain gen law enforcement started in February. We're estimating that a full year of all five will give us about two hundred tons. So that's going to go elevated a little more. Now, to your point. This is all the tons captured. That huge line of eighty thousand kilowatt hours only saved us two tons because of consumer power versus the hundred and eighty tons. Not from, and those are about the same array sizes that in here. That's how clean consumer power is um versus Pacific. It's that demonstrable. So why we're boring you with this is that we go out and trying to find solar, we really want to focus on specific range. Cause it's just, it's not that much cleaner to so generate solar and consumer power's grid. So hopefully that, that's why it's. Oh, one and a half tons out of eighty thousand. And then, but now we're looking at way more.
Is that because consumer power buys from Bonneville and it's all hydroelectric?
Look at it, um, I'll. Pacific still has coal, still has a regional effort um or source side, yeah, solar, wind. Um, hydro, that's why consumers so clean. So that hopefully gets to your question. Okay. Um, so this is uh my second last slide. When it comes to the inventory and as and a path moving forward, we are definitely in a. In the next couple of years of flux, um, we are certainly going to be bringing on the crisis center courthouse and D A's office. Um, those other three, I hope fans, I can at least say this, will have more direction in nine or not eight or nine hours. Um. But these are, these are, again, this ripple effect of how these decisions for the first time, other than the second floor at Avery, this is the first time we've built in. Easily one in a decade, if not longer. And so as we start, it's not a showcase, but as we start moving like people in places around. We're already having conversations with uh Public Works about the B O C, which is empty. Do we need that? Um, again, Oregon shines this new, this public um blue sky and the second offset. They require a twenty year contract so that they have risk that they can build these projects. We don't, you know, public works, do we have that for twenty years? Do we have law enforcement if what happens in the next ten hours? Uh, these are really big decisions that are kind of. Are are have a profound impact on our inventory and meeting our goal. And just starting, it's starting to ask questions in the shirets that we're having with the courthouse. How do we, how can, how energy efficiency can we get? Where does staff move to? These are questions we haven't really been dealing with for quite some time. So. Um, and also looking at a conversation about how our buildings configured. Um, if more people come in with laptops, do we need to follow up? I mean, these questions for the first time are being asked internally. So. Um, that's where headed. And then also looking at solar generation. Uh, by law, one and a half percent of all new construction expenditures have to go to solar, I'm sorry, was energy efficiency or generation. Well, those, we already had this conversation with public works. If those are aggregated, can we start looking at solar farm? Uh, where, how can we start doing all of these long range planning things? So. We're on the precipice here of some major decisions in the next week to five years uh and settling out those when it comes to our inventory. And then lastly, what we're going to be doing on the inventory side, um, the scenario builder that Jen's going to highlight uh at the end of her presentation. Continue a fine tuning. And there's still some sources that we're ex- exploring to add in there. Like reverse travel miles, that would be added to fleets. When you drive, you submit your reimbursement, we can capture those mileage. And that is technically fleet. It's not your commute, it's your fleet. So um, these are some of the things we're moving forward. Before heading over to Jen, other questions on the inventory or our emissions?
We'd have to then add in on our uh reimbursement mileage forms, whether it's a, what kind of a vehicle it is.
And that's exactly, yeah. And where we just, yeah, and that's, that's what's like any averages. Um, we historically have not asked that in the survey because the last thing, what car do you drive? What truck do you drive? What's your vendor? It's like, whoa, 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 whoa. Uh, way too intrusive. So um, these are kind of the things we need to start looking at moving forward.
Well, I I appreciate that. I I know the. Struggle you've been through the last um several years to uh get accurate data and then um. Well, if it's not accurate before twenty nineteen or whatever. Uh, acknowledge that and say, well, that's the uh best we could do. Um, probably not going to mess with that. But what we will do is uh keep uh fine tuning and being more uh accurate going forward. And yeah, uh, I appreciate the. The efforts it took to get to uh where we are now.
Those two behind me. Yes, so thanks to them.
I'm going to operate two machines at the same time. Hopefully. Okay, well, um, thanks Commissioner Suzanne Vance for having us here. Um, in this section, I'm going to briefly ground us in our climate action plan or cap. I'm going to highlight actions the counties have um already taken. Um, I'm going to take a look at the scenario builder with you and how we could chart a path forward to our twenty thirty goal. And I'm going to close with a summary of next steps and recommendations for us. All right. So here's our climate action plan. This is obvi- action plan. This is obviously just a picture. You've seen it before in previous years. It's on the B. It's. Readily available. It's on our website. And the cap is really meant to provide a roadmap to our mission's goal. Uh, again, our goal is internal to the county, to government operations, and so actions in the cap also apply to government operations. Our cap is iterative, so we went through, it was developed in twenty eighteen and we went through a complete internal and external review in twenty twenty one. So last year at this meeting, we spent a lot of time talking kind of about that review and and things from that. If you can see it all, great. Okay, so for each of our um sources of emissions, fleet fuel, employee commute. Electricity, natural gas, water, waste and purchasing, we have a set of high level objectives. And I want to point out a few things that our emissions are measured by calendar year. So if you're looking at those columns on the far right. That's what the C Y is, it's calendar year. And um, the other thing I want to point out is that our goal of fifty percent reduction from twenty ten levels. Is not necessarily meant to be applied evenly to all sources of emissions. We don't have a fifty percent target for fleet or commute or waste. And that's because what we know is that we have the ability to take more progress and impact and have more impact on some objectives than others. All right, so under each objective, we have a set of strategies. So here are examples of a snapshot of strategies under. Um, our energies emissions from, um, this is for reducing from electricity and natural gas. And if we were to drill down even further, you would see that under each strategy, there's a list of potential actions and next step for each objectives. So any questions on how the cap is organized? All right. So let's take a list, look at our progress and um by objectives, how we're doing on those. We're going to start with emissions from fleet fuel. And in this next set of slides, gray is for actions that have previously been completed. And they continue to help us reduce our emissions. Dark blue are actions that were completed in twenty twenty two. So the year we're talking about as we look back. In our greenhouse gas inventory and actions that are planned in the near future are in light blue. So to reduce emissions from fleet fuel in twenty twenty two, we added a hybrid to our fleet. So now we have eight. Uh, we also. We have our first electric ticket, but that was ordered back in twenty twenty two, still yet to arrive. But we do have funding for electric buses. I think six electric buses for our Benton area transit program. And looking forward to also have a draft of a fleet policy and guidelines manual, which will really help programs as they. Replace vehicles. In reducing miles driven, we, as Sean mentioned, we had our budget code for personal vehicle reimbursement. So that's really going to increase our tracking so we can have a sense of really how many miles we're driving for. For work purposes. And some of our departments, some property assessments, um, are now be able to be completed virtually. So that reduces driving from that department. All right, employee commute. Uh, last year, at the very end of the year, we replaced our emergency telework policy with an official one. So this really gives directors the tool to use. Teleworking to scheduling to reduce um the commute in their department. All right. In the energy area, so this is both electricity and natural gas. Uh, facilities really continues to do the heavy lift in this area. They're um upgrading our buildings to be the most energy efficient. Uh, one of the plans they have, the plan they have now is to complete the transition to LEDs for all um county fixtures. So in this next biennium, we should. Move to be having all LEDs, which is really great. Energy efficiency is paired with transitioning to renewable energy. So Sean mentioned that we continue to purchase renewable energy through Pacific Power's Blue Sky Program. And we also now have solar arrays operating on five of our buildings. And beginning later this year, we will subscribe to the Oregon Community Solar Program. Through Oregon shines, which is the subscription manager for that program. And I'm going to talk about the Oregon Community Solar Program in just a moment, but I want to keep a quick shout out to. Solar on our facilities. These are the five facilities where we have solar. Generating on county buildings. We have about thirty, three hundred and twenty kilowatts of solar on our buildings. It's generating about three hundred and forty thousand kilowatt hours of electricity a year. Supplying fourteen percent of our consumption and saving the county a hundred and eighty tons of emissions a year. Uh, you'll notice that the the two buildings on the right, the L E V and Lincoln just came on in twenty twenty two. We haven't had a full year. So in a, when we have a full year of generation from those two buildings, um, it'll be about two hundred tons of emissions saved. Okay. Oregon Community Solar Program. So the Oregon Community Solar Program was created to add to Oregon's renewable energy mix. It is similar to Pacific Power's Blue Sky Program in that funding into the program. Increases renewable energy installations that supply our grid. And then the county gets renewable energy credits or R E Cs to offset that offset our electricity use. But it's different than Blue Sky um in a couple of ways. Funds that go into Oregon um Community Solar Program. Will fund the energy projects in Oregon versus projects in Pacific Power's eleven state region. Um, and our subscription is going to go to cover a portion of a project going in in Clamath Falls and another one going in in Albany. So that's what we're looking at later, signing now contracts for later this year. Oregon Community Solar Program also comes with a cost savings um versus a cost premium. So Pacific Power, we pay a premium for that renewable energy, for Blue Sky energy. Um, in Oregon Community Solar Program, we actually get a little bit of money back. And how it works is this, we're subscribing um specific meters at seven facilities into the program. It's going to offset about fifty percent of our electricity use. And then it all goes through our utility bill and the project generates a small. Um, refund on the meters we subscribe. And so we get about a five percent. Return on those meters. So it shows the subscription fee and the bill credit all show on the bills for those meters. And there's no upfront money to pay it. And it all happens at the utility level. So it's really sort of a win win for both the county and the environment for solar for all of that. Questions on any of that?
Sounds too good to be true.
It does almost sound too true. Yeah, it's really, it's it's an exciting project. And again, it's going to be about fifty percent of our electricity use. Once it's up and running, we'll be upset.
Enough supply for us. That's what the last year is. They opened up more supply so we can join it. So. Um, yeah, it's a tried and true. What was you as well? Um, subscribe to this. So it's, it's nice that that opportunity presented itself to us and that we took advantage.
And it comes with a twenty year commit.
Twenty year commitment. So we really had to look carefully at the buildings that we chose that um. Not just all of our meters were viable in that sense, because we didn't know certain buildings. So we wouldn't put the old B O C. On that contract because we don't know what's going to happen with it versus this building, we think will be here another twenty years. Um, they also take subscriptions at different levels. So one of the things they do is large commercial, small commercial. So we have meters that did both of those. And they do residential as well. So it is really a program that's, that's open to resident. In the residential area, I know they have. A lot of open subscription areas. They just haven't filled those. It's really open to people in Benton County as well.
It is this uh something as we uh. Build facilities, change facilities uh that that we could add to our what we're currently um. Buying in.
If they ha- yeah, if they have space in those um subscription category, in those meter categories, large commercials. It's about the size of how much energy you're using, how much electricity you're using on that meter, then yes, so. They just opened up. So initially, we were having it, we had a contract for. For small, our sort of small commercial meters. And then a new product, the project in Albany opened up with some large. So we could add on some of our larger meters like Calaia.
And and is this uh. Publicly done uh versus a private uh company that's.
So Oregon shines, the subscription manager is a private company. But this goes through, it's managed by the Public Utilities Commission. It was put, um, Oregon Community Solar Program was put in place at the state level. So it's a state program for Oregon. Um, put in place. It was, it was created in twenty sixteen by Senate Bill fifteen forty seven and it was actually. Um, launched in twenty twenty.
Great, uh, Mike.
Okay, so. Waste, we have a lot of systemic processes that really reduce waste. We saw some of those we've been seeing for a long time, like surplus and reuse. Has been a program that has been going on in the county for many, many years. Um, and that's great. We also saw some new stuff coming online. Benton Breakfast, they use the dishes that. The county had bought, fairgrounds had bought, and the new dishwasher there. So reducing hundreds of plates. And utensils from going into, but um going into landfill. So no more single use there. Which is really great. Um, another one that I know facilities is excited about moving forward is these um thermoplastic parking lot lines. Which are going to save a hundred and fifty gallons of paint a year. So they're just going to be much more efficient. They get put down and then they last. All right, um, reducing impact from our purchasing, financial services is really working um to increase efficiencies. And realize greater cost savings through countywide procurement processes. We're going to pilot a lot of those here in Calaia, starting this year twenty twenty three. Um, so all eight departments that are in Calaia are taking advantage of purchasing contracts that are negotiated for the state of Oregon for office supplies. And we're going to switch to a managed delivery system, which means that all of the eight departments will will make their orders anytime. But the truck will only come once a week. So that's one of those same things about. The truck coming once a week doesn't hit our um. Our inventory, but it, we know that having one truck coming versus maybe eight times a week. Trucks are coming to make deliveries makes a difference. Okay. And multi-source actions. These are actions that reduce emissions from multiple source areas. Um, we've talked about before about the resources on the B and we've talked about that departments now. Um, work with the Resource Efficiency Committee member to implement sustainability and climate friendly actions. In their annual department climate action plan and checklist. But the two really big actions right now in this area are each department. in this area are each department um created a climate action goal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-five biennium. And that was really a result of the commissioners um prioritizing climate action. And here in Calaquilla, we reached beyond our target of lead silver to achieve lead gold, sort of relationship for this building. Exactly. Um, so any questions about all the amazing climate actions that the county has been undertaking?
Well, I guess so. Uh, you you mentioned that prioritizing where we put our efforts. Um, we've got this overarching um goal and then doing a lot of uh changes, building, and I think that um, we'll just uh should have some discussion in the in the uh future that uh uh climate action is one of our priorities. It's not our only one. And how do the uh pieces fit together and and um may have to adjust our goals or uh you you got into uh energy use per FDE and energy use uh per square foot that may not be uh practical uh currently, but uh not not just relying on one uh metric and saying, yes, we did, no, we didn't, but uh making sure we're doing the best we can uh for uh sustainability efforts while at the same time delivering services and programs that are in some cases desperately needed. And so um but uh I uh, like I said earlier, appreciate uh the efforts getting us to uh this point where we we are uh doing a pretty good job of tracking usage and and then at um some point have having a a discussion of um we're we're doing more now than uh we were in twenty-ten, and that that needs to be uh recognized. And uh
I may, I, a few things. Yes, climate is a huge issue, but we are the sustainability program, which also gets into responsible governance, more efficient, more effective in our usage. I think that's huge, and that's what we're trying to do with the budget when I was presenting with Rick, seeing how all these pieces fit together. Having trucks come once a week is just more efficient. Tracking these things, we can finally start tracking what this is to be more transparent to the to the public, to get to your, to get to your point.
And something you said, uh Sean, about um maybe having the opportunity to develop our own solar farm and and what what I know about some of uh like solar projects, there there are definitely economies of scale and uh that uh we're getting into some of that by the uh Oregon Community Solar uh Program. And letting them do uh economies of scale and but looking for opportunities uh of our own and then keep me posted. That's that's exciting.
We know what you said.
All right. So yes, we are doing a lot. Um, however. Um, as you saw, we're really moving away from and not towards our goal. So the scenario tracker, so this was put together as a way for us to start to look at our different actions and our emissions and to chart a path forward and what the impact of different different actions would be. What you see here is um our current state. This is the information Sean presented earlier about our emissions, and it's just laid out differently. I'm going to walk you through it because then we'll make some changes to it and see how that pans out. Um, in this box on usage on the left, this is the same numbers that we saw in inventory earlier. So for electricity, for commute, for fleet, for natural gas and other, those are the emissions, the tons of emissions we saw earlier, a total of three thousand nine hundred and six, right? And then in the green box in the middle, that is the hundred and eighty tons of emissions that's reduced by generating um electricity from solar panels on counting buildings. And then the offsets, both Blue Sky and carbon capture, that's a hundred and seventy-six. And so in this box on the far right, you see that calculation. You see the three hundred um, the three thousand nine hundred and six from usage minus the hundred and eighty from solar minus the offsets and the three thousand five hundred and fifty net emissions. Um, tons of emissions that we saw earlier in John, in the first part of the presentation. Um, and then our goal, which is the ten percent, the fifty percent of twenty-ten levels was one thousand six hundred and fifty-six. And you see that we're, there's a gap. We're almost nineteen hundred tons away from our goal. So if we continue as we're doing in twenty twenty-four, it could potentially look like this. In twenty twenty-four, we would have all the same usage emissions on the left box. We would have full, um, a full year of solar from those five arrays we have, bringing us up to two hundred um in savings there. And we would have using Blue Sky to a twenty-five percent reduction, a twenty-five percent of our usage in Blue Sky and um Oregon Community Solar Program, which is about fifty percent. So we would be offsetting about seventy-five percent of our electricity in the offset box. And this is what twenty twenty-four might look like. And but it assumes that we have no increase in staff, thus no increase in commute miles driven um or fleet miles driven, and it assumes we have no change in facilities. So unlikely we'll stay here, but this is what it could look like. We're still nine hundred and forty-two tons from our goal. So here's some potential actions we could take. Using the scenario builder, we can see how they're going to impact. We could chart this path forward. We could sell the former VOC and complete the LED upgrades across the county, which would bring us down to around one thousand two hundred and sixty-five tons in the electricity area of um emissions. We could um offset a hundred percent of our Pacific Power electricity. So that's spying more from um Blue Sky or getting more credits from um Oregon Community Solar. We could reduce our employee commute fifteen percent through telework and increasing alternative schedules such as four tens and nine eighties. And we could reduce emissions from fleet and emissions from fleet can be brought down in a number of ways, not just less driving, but also increasing electric and hybrid vehicles. That will reduce emissions from fleet. And for them remaining, that would still leave us three hundred and fifty-one um tons from our goal. And for those three hundred and fifty-one tons, we could buy offsets, we could purchase offsets for those remaining emissions. So that shows in the middle on the blue offset box right there as other, and that's the three hundred and fifty-one. And those are going on to the open market and purchasing offsets. They're currently at about twenty dollars a ton, so it'd be a little over seven thousand dollars for those offsets. Um, but those offsets are rising in price as supply um is harder to get. Questions about this?
My uh only question is that uh you're assuming that we can bring down emissions from fleet, but it all depends on what sort of electricity we're charging with. Um, either whether it's my home vehicle or whether it's a county vehicle. Um, it it's still consuming electricity from the grid and um, it sounds like it'd be a lot more um efficient to do so at Pat's place than at mine. Um.
It does get into all the coefficients that we're we're trying to take the scenario builder to the next level. If we had us, we just don't have estimates like of what a potential JSEP could. If we have those, we could add that depending upon where it is. We could add, um, we know that the feasibility study for uh EV charging stations potentially at Sunset and three others. That has a lot of electricity. I mean, like new lines, so we can start to put that in there. But it's the offset of gasoline, and we can really start to identify exactly, to get to your question, all these trade-offs. Where can we go and be the most effective and efficient looking forward and cost effective? We need to be physically sustainable as well.
Well, it sounds like a great tool.
Yes.
When are you going to begin to factor in the new courthouse and the new DA's office to offset probably our most inefficient structure?
That is exactly where we are. I mean, uh, because we're looking at it. So like, current LED has about seven hundred and fifty thousand kilowatts. The weird part is we share the tonnage with Corvallis, because they have. So we we stumbled across that four or five years ago. We were actually double counting. I took I took it for us and Corvallis said it for theirs. So that's seven hundred and fifty thousand. That's, that is, that's twice this. So exactly, when we start, we're just now in the shiret stage of the new, whatever's new, and I need to look at you what I can say new until nine hours from now. Exactly. Yeah, right, correct. So those give you ideas of the courthouse and LEDB where all those others, once we start to get energy estimates, then we can put it, we just don't, we don't have what that is right now. And the stress that was going on last month are very, we haven't gone to energy modeling yet. Once that hits, then we can really start to say, okay, here's our, not our fleet, here's our menu, our stock of facilities. How do we start to manage those?
Right. So we can, we can look now and we can say, this is what the courthouse, this is the, it's it's carbon footprint in a sense. And so we can kind of see where those other buildings are going to land as compared to it.
Okay, so so you're beginning to ponder and how to
Yeah.
fold these new elements into your.
Yeah, we have the calculator. We just don't have the the numbers. So that part. But if you want to shoot as a side note.
Can I, can I just ask really quick? Can I just get a a quick ETA of how much more time we think we're going to go? Because I have a noon appointment. I just need to let them know approximately how.
This is my last slide.
No, um, you know, we haven't been talking about these kinds of issues for years and years and years and and having a conversation. But what's our long-term facilities plan? Do we have one? What like, these are great questions that we need to start asking now to get to those. Where are we going to be in ten years, fifteen? Again, there's a huge carbon aspect. There's a fiscal sustainability aspect. There's all these different things. But we've just never, we haven't been asked those questions yet. So.
Okay, so I'm just going to end with our next steps and recommendations. So the first um two bullets on this list, developing and adopting fleet and facility policies and completing upgrades to LEDs. These are currently being advanced in the county already. Uh, we also recommend departments um be aggressive in implementing telework and alternative schedules that reduce commute drive miles. Um, and we encourage the county to explore programs that could be implemented countywide. For example, to consider bands to neighborhoods with high concentrations of employees or at a dis- at a greater distance really makes an impact. Um, that we accelerate the transition of our fleet, particularly vehicles that are driven nine, ten thousand plus mi- miles a year to electric. And um our our facilities is really looking at that. They've already done the feasibility studies with Pacific Power for having um EV charging stations at four of our primary buildings. So that's been completed just this last month. And so now they have the information they need to move forward. Uh, that we support financial services and all departments really to implement purchasing procedures that reduce our carbon footprint. That we continue to purchase RECs to offset our energy use, both for electricity and natural gas. And that we continue to prioritize climate in our goals and actions, and also look to our outward facing fun function. So the examples of managed delivery of our purchases, that parks is moving to an online reservation system, as Jesse Ott would say. You can now reserve a park if you're living in Paris, and you won't have to come to a building to do that. Um, seat, um, community development is continuing to move forward, online plan review. So there's there, they have not implemented yet that yet, but they're really actively looking at being able to do that again, reducing the amount of drive that has to come to this building to do a plan review. And at the same time that we begin planning for how the county can adapt to a changing climate. So this is something that the health department has begun with its new position dedicated to adaptation planning. And Joe Kirby identified as the VOC department goal for this upcoming biennium. And that's all I have. Questions?
Well, just as the comment, uh, and I think we're fortunate to be this far along in the in the process uh when we start adding, changing our facilities. Um, so there's not, not quite as many moving pieces to um say, well, we do have a baseline and and uh we're, we're adding and subtracting. But to have something uh that that you're fairly confident that uh you you know where where we were in twenty twenty-two, uh, I think is uh we're fortunate to um, um, be as far along as we are. Okay, thank you for uh your team's uh efforts.
Thank you for your commitment.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
I think it's both a time of um optimism, because you guys have done so much. And uh all of this planning is so much more real and tangible than it has been in the past.
Yeah.
Rather than just go out there um and a time of reality check because of of the facility's expansion.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So do I recess the? Okay, so. It's over. All right. Guess we can do it in alphabetical order, so we need uh ten and bill, I assume.
There she is.
She is.
As if by magic. Um. So uh let's start with the Alpine, Alpine County Service District Governing Board. I'll uh call the meeting to order. Are there any announcements? Hearing none, uh, review and approve the agenda. Hearing no changes, the consider the agenda is approved. Are there any uh comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent calendar.
Hope to approve the consent counter. Second.
All in favor, say aye. And now we'll open the public hearing. Uh. You're up, Jen.
All right, good afternoon. The Alpine County Service District is requesting a supplemental budget to increase materials and services by seven thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. The source of that increase would be a corresponding decrease in their contingency. And the primary reason for this request is they had unanticipated costs to maintain sewer lines that was not in the original budget adoption.
All right, is there, are there any uh questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
Hey, uh, are there any members of the public that was to wish to comment at this point? Hearing none? Um, we just uh need a motion for the resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution, the matter of supplemental budget two, three, one, one, three. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other business? Hearing none, um, meeting is adjourned. And now we'll uh go to the Elsie. Also. L C County Service District Governing Board, um I'll call the meeting to order. Are there any announcements? Hearing none, uh review and approve the agenda. Um hearing no comments, the agenda is approved. Are there any uh comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh I will now open the uh public hear, public hearing in the matter. Uh regarding adoption of supplemental budget twenty-three, one, one, two for the L C County Service District. Um Janet Embiel.
So the L C County Service District is also requesting an increase. To their appropriation authority within materials and services. The amount for this increase is thirteen thousand dollars and consequently then they would be decreasing their contingency, that corresponding thirteen thousand dollar amount. They too had the same situation happen as Alpine. They had unanticipated costs to maintain the sewer lines out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh. I've got last area, open the public hearing.
Very good comments from everybody.
Yeah, all right. Are there any members of the public that was to wish to testify at this point? Hearing none, I will entertain the motion.
I move to adopt the resolution, R two, zero, twenty-three dash zero, zero, five, in the matter of supplemental budget two, three, one, one, two.
I could zero, zero, six.
Is the motion wrong in the packet? Jen, is it oh, oh, six or oh, oh, five?
Uh I will have to look in the packet. I don't assign those numbers. I'm sorry.
Okay, it's different on the agenda. I'm.
So just just drop the number to set the resolution.
So amended.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other um business? Hearing none, um meeting is adjourned.